Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 8, 2011. If all please rise and join me in saluting our flag. Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Gillette is absent. Councilmember Bill De La Peña present. Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Erwin.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here. Item four is request for a continuance of any public hearing item. Special presentation 5C is being pulled from the agenda tonight. Kevi is the recipient of that special presentation when is unable to attend tonight's council meeting. We would like to however wish Louise Nakuta a very happy 101st birthday. So Louise is not here, but let's give her a round of applause. Louise, if you're watching tonight, nice job, 101 years. Item five is our special presentations, so give me a moment and I'll go down to the podium. We have three presentations this evening, and to begin, I'd like to invite our library director Steve Brogdon and Burgut Whale, the administrative assistant and special project for Volkswagen Group of America, to join me at the podium.
Good evening.
Steve?
Good to see you.
It's been said many times that Thousand Oaks is fortunate to have numerous generous supporters who contribute to our quality of life and to our overall great community. Tonight, our library director Steve Brogdon would like to tell us about one of those valued donors. Steve?
Thank you Mayor Fox, council members. The Thousand Oaks Library has been known for, ever since its beginning, for the community support it receives. The two main functions or the two main organizations that do that are the Thousand Oaks Library Foundation and the Friends of Thousand Oaks Library. There also have been many corporate supporters over the years. Sage Publications is one, Affinity Bank is another. I'm delighted to announce that we can add another organization to that today. Volkswagen of America has donated $5,000 that we're planning to use to enhance our ebook collection. And now I'd like to introduce Burgid Whale, who is the employee of Volkswagen who nominated Thousand Oaks Library for this honor, and we're just delighted to be able to accept it. So now I'd like to introduce Burgid Whale.
Thank you Steve. I'm working for Volkswagen Group of America at the test center in Westlake Village and I'm a member of the Diversity Council there. So last year Volkswagen Group asked us to identify some charitable or nonprofit organizations that might benefit from a grant. Since our diversity group had already supported the Thousand Oaks Library, it's the logical extension. And I'm a regular visitor to the library. Just like W slogan, "Drivers Wanted," the library has readers wanted. So we were honored to present on behalf of Volkswagen Group of Americas more than 4,500 employees with over 60 in Westlake to library director Steve Potkin the check of $5,000 for the use of our new electronic book startup collection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Our second special presentation tonight, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to invite up Carol Nussbaum to the podium. Carol's with, it is bittersweet, ends with mixed emotions that we bring you up here possibly for the last time this evening. For those of you that don't know, Carol's the president and CEO of Cabrillo Music Theater, one of our resident companies here in Thousand Oaks. Carol's been doing that for six years now. She opted to take a new position with new challenges, which I think we'll probably hear about a little later, but I'd like to kind of depart from how I normally handle these things in terms of talking about the recipient, and I actually want to read from the accommodation this evening, because I think the accommodation really outlines all that Carol has done in our community. Combination in honor of Carol W. Nussbaum. Whereas Carol Nussbaum has served as president and chief executive officer of Cabrillo Music Theater, the resident musical production company of the City of Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza since 2005. And in 2004, while Carol was working as a volunteer with the Alliance for the Arts, she helped save the nonprofit theater from financial insolvency. And through her dynamic personality, business sense, innovation, marketing, hard work, and endless dedication, Carol rescued Cabrillo. She gave freely by donating her time and financial support. And once Carol stabilized Cabrillo financially, she went on to build a regionally acclaimed theater company, building relationships, and securing renowned shows. Carol led the way for Cabrillo to become an Ovation Award winning company, receiving 18 ovation nominations in 2008. She also forged the way for Cabrillo to host the 2010 Ovation Awards here at the Civic Arts Plaza at the Cavalry Theater in January of 2011. In 2005, Carol initiated a theater outreach program to serve children, military personnel, seniors, as well as abused animals. She offered free tickets to underprivileged children. The theater company has served over 31,000 underserved individuals since Carol took over. In short, Carol has provided exemplary leadership and service to our community. Now therefore, I, Andrew Fox, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, commend Carol Nussbaum for her heart of gold, her energy, her spirit, her passion, monumental contributions, dedication, and outstanding leadership. We wish her well as she moves on to a new and exciting endeavor. Carol, I know I speak for the entirety of city council, city staff, and the many, many hearts and minds and souls of you touched throughout your years here. We thank you for your service. You're a class lady. Thanks very much.
This I will cherish forever, as I do all of Thousand Oaks. I had the privilege this afternoon of attending a luncheon sponsored in part by the Big Brothers Big Sisters with Prime Minister Tony Blair. He mentioned something that really triggered my thoughts about our leadership and our community, and he said, "Leadership is not a spectator sport." And I want to thank every person here, every city council person, our mayor, all of the wonderful staff, our patrons, every person who has come up to me during a show and intermission and told me their story of joy through our theater productions and others that they've had, our outreach programs that have inspired me and so many of us beyond words. Each and every one of these people is a leader, a leader of Thousand Oaks that has built so much here. I've lived in many cities and I have to say, Thousand Oaks is for sure the most extraordinary. And I take with me so much, it was a monumental journey of monumental joy to me. And from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you to all of you and Thousand Oaks. And much like Dorothy from The Wizard of Oz in saying hello to the wizard and all of the champions and all of the heroes, I'm going to click my heels, but the big difference is I am home. So thank you.
For those of you that had the opportunity to either view it on TV or watch it in person, the CIF championship game between Oaks Christian and Westlake High School last year was, and I'll ask Coach, it might have been the greatest high school football game I know I've ever seen, just an outstanding game with outstanding sportsmanship. You guys played hard, tough loss, what a way to go. I don't know if the kicker's here tonight, but my hat goes off to that kid. But I can tell you guys from anybody that's ever played high school football, that was an absolute pleasure to watch. Win or lose, you guys played as champions, you represented the community very, very well. This ain't your first time here, and so we are just so proud of Westlake High School and the football program and Coach Penker, your staff, administrators, all of you do. Like to invite you up here to introduce the kids.
Thank you Mayor Fox, and I want to thank the council for having us here tonight. As Mayor Fox said, it was a great ride. I don't know if it was a great ending, but it was a great ride, and you know, I'm really proud of all the players and the effort that they did. I also wanted to point out that the amazing fields that we have in all three of our high schools due to the tremendous work by the city staff and the city council, as well as redevelopment agency, just couldn't do it without those great beautiful fields that we have in all three of our high schools. And also, you know, you come by Westlake High School at any time during the day and you see those fields being used, starting at 7:00 in the morning with soccer practices going on there, and then the PE classes, and then as well as the athletic teams in the afternoons that are in season. So I want to thank the city council and the redevelopment agency for those fields, they are just marvelous. And with that, I'm going to introduce our first captain, who's going to be heading to Louisiana State, oh excuse me, Louisiana Tech, and on a full scholarship. He's a two-time CIF Player of the Year and also an All-State quarterback, Nick Eisham.
As a team at Westlake, we refer to ourselves as the Band of Brothers. It really means a lot to us because of the history behind it. It comes from the 101st Airborne who fought originally in World War II. They referred to each other as the Band of Brothers. It meant that they would always be there for each other through the good and the bad. They would pick each other up when they were down and be there for them in the good times. They were brothers. We try to exemplify that mentality, being a part of the football team at Westlake. We see each game as a battle and the season as a war. We need to be there for each other through the best and worst of times. Win or lose, we had each other's backs. On and off the field, we were there for each other no matter what. Whether it was helping them with schoolwork, teaching the young players their keys or reads, or giving them a hand after they've been tackled, it was our jobs to be there for them, and we wouldn't have it any other way. I believe that mentality that Coach Penker instilled in us has really helped us to become successful through the past couple of seasons as a whole, and I know that the future will only be bright for the Westlake Warriors. The next captain is Trevor Wood.
Teamwork is the way to success. It is coordinated effort on the part of a group of persons acting together as a team or in the interest of a common cause. The definition of teamwork is Westlake football. We look out for each other on and off the field. We always try to help someone do better. When a teammate is struggling in school, we step up and help them. When a player is making the wrong decisions, we step in and help them make the right decisions. Westlake football is all about teamwork, and that's why we are proud to be called the Band of Brothers. Adam Zohr.
Respect was a trait that our team used frequently. We respect our coaches, we respect our opponents, and most importantly, we respect each other. We treat each other as a family, pick one another up when they're down, and congratulate each other when we're successful. We respect our teammates no matter what situation may be. It would be an honor to introduce Max Swinsberg.
When I think about the football season, the first thing that comes to mind is all the hard work that all of the players put in. Determination to get better and improve as football players every day is what made our team successful. We had to put in countless hours throughout the whole year to be successful in a handful of games. Football is a commitment unlike any sport because of the physical and mental toll of the practices. We had practices starting from spring going through summer until we hit two days. After all the practice, when it was finally time to play a game, then the fun finally began. It was showing up to practice every day and putting in your maximum effort, that was the hard part. The players on our team were dedicated not only to football, but also to helping out the person beside them, and that is what I think made our team successful and enjoyable to be a part of. I'd like to introduce Nelson Spruce.
One thing I think all of us learned from Westlake football is the importance of dedication. It is hard to believe the time and effort that goes into a season of football, and I think it says a lot about every player's character that makes it through. The fact that a whole team is relying on each of us is the motivation we need to put in work day after day. The dedication and work ethic we learned from these years of football have prepared us for the rest of our life. And the last captain is Taver Murray.
Westlake football not only teaches you how to become a better football player, but also how to become a better man. I believe that each and every one of us will take something from the coaches that we've had and apply it to some aspect or a situation in our life. And that's what I got from Westlake football.
They'll come up. Edward, would you like him to stand up?
And they're going to line up here on the ground.
I'd now like to introduce the rest of the Warrior team members who are here this evening.
A'Shawn Hunt.
Jordy Hannum.
Tony McCary.
Logan Chase.
Keith Romiak.
Anthony Devonzio.
Zach Mumford.
Jason Goldberg.
Aaron Gottlieb.
Cuddy Tuttle.
Alan McGee.
Taver Murray.
Nelson Spruce.
Adam Zohr.
Max Swinsberg.
Trevor Wood.
Nick Eisham.
I'd like to also introduce Coach Ellis Green, Hector Castro, and Ron Raisigno of the coaching staff.
Okay. We have one other item under continuance, so if there's no exception from the council, item 8A, purchasing code revisions, is also being continued to March 22nd. If there's no objection, that'll be the order. All right, hearing none. Move to item six, that's public comment. Madam Clerk, could you call item six for public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Nine people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you Ms. Lawrence. We have three members of our youth commission. We have Amanda Young, Alyssa Leone, and Hannah Barrett. Those three young ladies want to come up? Good evening.
Good evening Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Hannah Barrett, and I am the chair of the Youth Commission's 21st Annual Therapeutic Dance. I would like to introduce a new and very valuable member of the Youth Commission, Alyssa Leone, to tell you more about this year's event.
Good evening, my name is Alyssa Leone. The therapeutic dance is a prom for young adults 13 and up with disabilities. It is held at the team center and includes dinner, dancing, souvenir photo, balloon drop, entertainment, movies, and more. The theme for this year's dance is Ultimate Heroes. Attendees can dress like their own personal hero, a firefighter, policeman, armed force member, superhero, or maybe even an official board member. The cost is $5 and scholarships will be available. The dance is scheduled for March 26th from 6:00 to 9:30 PM. The Youth Commission would like to invite all council members and encourage all young adults with disabilities and their caregivers to attend. We have had some very generous donations this year, and we would like to thank our sponsors. Without their support, this event would not be possible. Albertson's, Attorney David Esquibas, Bandit's Grill, Bruno Financial, Command Performance, Costco, Diamond Ground Products, Dr. Richard Danes, Dr. Walter Thomas, Dr. Stephen Kundell, Dr. Robin McEglin, Earth to Comics, Fresh Brothers, Hooper Camera, In-N-Out Burger, J.C. Plumbing and Things, Jersey Mike's, Matt McLean Dental Corporation, The Breakfast Cafe, The Curtis Team, Thousand Oaks Children's Dental Group, Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation, Trader Joe's, Vons, and Western Bagel.
Thank you Alyssa. If you have any questions regarding this event or are interested in sponsoring, please contact the Youth Commission via email at youthcommission@tox.org or call 805-449-2743. To RSVP, please call 805-381-2739. The Youth Commission would like to thank the Alex Burey Teen Center and CRPD therapeutic unit for partnering with us, and city council for your continued support of the Youth Commission and this event.
Thank you ladies.
Good evening Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Manny Young, and I am a senior youth commissioner and this year's youth recognition award chair. The Youth Commission is pleased to announce this year's youth recognition awards ceremony. In our community, youth volunteers make a tremendous difference. They not only offer their time, but also their energy, skills, and talents helping to improve our community, local services, and lives. The City of Thousand Oaks would like to recognize their services and celebrate their contributions through these awards. Now the youth recognition awards is reliant upon organizations submitting nominations, and we are thrilled with the number of submissions we have received this year. We would like to thank the Cano Valley School District, school counselors, Thousand Oaks Teen Center, CRPD, therapeutic unit, Cano Valley Jazz Ensemble, Stagecoach Museum, Hogan Foundation, Teddy Bear Brigade, Girl Scouts of California, West Minister Free Clinic, and Hot Spice of the Cano for taking the time to nominate their volunteers. We will be contacting the nominees to select that we have selected to serve interviews this coming week. The ceremony will be held in May, and it will be a formal attire event. Thank you for your continued support of the Youth Commission, and especially this program, which honors all our youth volunteers, and we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you ladies. Marilyn Carpenter, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Debbie Gregory. Just note, Ms. Carpenter is a former planning commissioner of the City of Thousand Oaks. Good evening.
Is it, hi. I am an old timer, as you know, I know all of you, and I am here first to say thank you for the service you provide to the city. We all appreciate what you do, and I certainly know that you invest enormous time and energy into representing your views on the council. However, I'm here because I'm deeply concerned that what I believe is really important, which is a respect for other points of view, and the understanding that it's through the debate with people who may not share our view, but bring a different view to the deliberation, that we arrive at the kinds of decisions that have helped this community evolve into the one we are proud of and the one that is viewed all over the state really as a premier community. So with that in mind, I'm here because I'm so concerned that the council took action to deny council member Bill De La Peña's nomination for the planning commission. Mayor Fox, you've served on the commission, I served on the commission for a while with you, and we didn't always agree. Councilmember Erwin, I believe, has served on the commission. I think Councilmember Glancy served on the commission as well. And it is, I think, through that exchange that we come to good decisions. We aren't always going to agree, so I was frankly deeply concerned that you chose not to accept council member Bill De La Peña's nomination, and I urge the rescission of that decision. You have an opportunity to do it right. She's going to renominate Al Adam to the commission, and he deserves reappointment. He served well there, he represents a point of view, that point of view garnered a lot of votes, council member Bill De La Peña garnered a lot of votes, and that view needs to be heard. So I urge you to do the right thing and take that action this evening. Second thing I wanted to bring up, because I've not spoken out on it before, is the Autumns Wall sign. And I'd like to say that I served on the commission when that was originally approved. Commission denied it, our decision overturned by the council, scaled down a bit, but what we got then is what we have now. I am still of a mind that because the sign, even as it exists now, did not represent the planning standards we had developed and on which the commission back then based its decision, I'm going to suggest something new. I've not said this before, but as I understand it, Lee Newman designed the landscape. He's a terrific landscape designer, and he submitted the winning design for the sign at the corner of Hillcrest and Lynn Road. Stunning City of Thousand Oaks monument sign, and I'd like to see the Autumns Wall sign go back to the drawing board, and I'd like to call on Lee Newman to come up and create a sign similar to what he has done, which is so elegant, so understated, so reflective of the standards that this community represents and has worked hard for. I'd love to call Lee and say, and I almost did it, but I don't know his phone number anymore, come on down and do that again, because we can do better than what we have now, and we can certainly do better than was proposed.
Thank you Ms. Carpenter.
You're welcome.
Nick Kidway, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by Jay, looks like Tisher. Kidway, good evening.
Good evening, I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, and Dr. Glancy, last time I checked, still the director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I would like to read a letter that I wrote to the governor and Two issues I'm concerned about: When did we realize, Governor, that unionizing government workers would give us the unfunded, bloated, calpers fiasco along with inflated salaries? We need to reach out to stop this madness, Governor Brown and Mayor Fox. RDAs, redevelopment agencies, have gone beyond our imagination. There are few agencies that do good work. My City of Thousand Oaks unfortunately is a poster child for what is wrong with RDAs. They have taken almost all our commercial land and made it blighted. We boast the biggest auto mall, yet it is blighted, so that it becomes eligible for $2 million of redevelopment, which is basically property taxes of the businesses. These same folks stole, via eminent domain, from a wealthy Iranian Jewish refugee in 1987, land to build an unneeded city hall, overbought, and so they ended up giving $12 million for four and a half acres to Los Angeles player, and now maybe mayor candidate Rick Caruso, and allow him to rent an upscale strip mall for $1 a year. I put $1 a day, but I mean, I'll take that for $5 a day. This agency, Honorable Governor, Mr. Controller, needs to be audited immediately. There are good people like Assemblyman Chris Norby, who's a Republican, working on the other side. I hope you will join forces with him so that we can pass the elimination of these ridiculous tax gouging redevelopment agencies. That is one of your priorities, to balance the budget. According to John Chiang, on December 31st, he wrote that the total taxes that these agencies are stealing from taxpayers in the state is $10 billion. Correction, it went down to $8.3 billion, but the debt that is owed is $28 billion. TO TV, if you can show that overhead, this is a piece of property, well, this is owned by an Iranian also, this building, but right next to it is what the city bought in a consent calendar item last meeting without even any discussion prior to that for $650,000, and made a mistake, which I pointed out, because this building is in between the property that they own, and they never corrected the mistakes. The state will get you. You don't think that you'll get away with it, Mayor?
Debbie Gregory, followed by Jay Tisher, followed by Todd Lundy. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Gregory. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I'm not very proud tonight. I'm also the CEO of a company that deals with heroes: the men and women who serve our country, the men and women who sacrifice their lives and their limbs. It's so nice to see you watching and giving attention to the speakers, Mr. Fox. Anyway, the men and women that give their lives and limb, and they do this, they go far away so that freedoms that we take for granted in this country, other countries can experience. And here I live, you know, in one of the most wonderful cities in the world in many ways, but we don't have these freedoms. I have concerns, and I want to bring them up. And I was amazed about two weeks ago to turn on the news, CNN, and hear Kira Phillips talking about the city of Bell and talking about other cities that have annex similar in Thousand Oaks was mentioned. And I have to agree with Kira. I want to talk about the lifetime healthcare benefits for part-time council members and their families. It is excessive, it is not equitable, but what really is offensive is that the committee determining if you're going to continue the benefits, reduce them, extend them, is made up of the very council members who will benefit from them. You have a conflict of interest, and to not have an independent committee is, you know, telling the people, "You don't care what they think. You're going to do what you want, what's in your best interests, not in the citizens' best interests." I don't care if you change it for future councils or whatever, you should not be the ones determining it. And I understand this is a legal opinion, that the city attorney said that it might cause a lawsuit. Well, I'd like to see some case law, given that the city attorney works at the pleasure of the council. Another area that I'd like to talk about is the city paying $400,000 for 11 angled spots in redevelopment money. Having a city manager that makes more than the Vice President of the United States and the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, and then he gets an $80,000 donation into his pension and goes on to the media criticizing what the state officials make on their pensions. And I'd like to know if the salary is financed by any redevelopment dollars. There's been quite an investigation into redevelopment, and I really think that the redevelopment dollars spent in Thousand Oaks, we need to go to help for affordable housing for people that really need it, and not billionaire developers, not, you know, billionaire auto malls. They need to be going where they need to go, and we need to be audited. And also, last but not least, passing over Mrs. Bill De La Pena. This was in your best interests. She won by more votes than anybody. The People's Will elected her, but the majority of this council, the political bullies, decided they weren't going to let her be on the council, and instead appointed Mrs. Irwin so that Mrs. Irwin will be the mayor when she runs for reelection the next time. It's wrong. You have to have respect for the people that, you know, you serve. If not, you don't belong in the dais.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Jay Tisher, followed by Todd Lundy, followed by Suzanne Duckett. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Joe Tischler, and I'm here on behalf of the organization of the Freedom Accepted Masons, our lodge in Abredo, 7000 Oaks. On a more pleasurable note, I hope that you will take some time to enjoy yourselves. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. It will be on the 25th of June, and it's a formal gala that will be held at the Hyatt in Westlake. And I have prepared, I will pack it with individual invitations and a flyer, and I hope that you will attend and mark your calendar as such. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Todd Lundy, followed by Suzanne Duckett, followed by John Fonti. Mr. Lundy, good evening.
Good evening. Todd Lundy, Thousand Oaks. There's one thing I would like to bring up that has been bugging me and bugging me and bugging me. You have a new, basically, transportation center, and you fly three flags there. You fly the American flag, you fly the California flag, and you fly the city flag, which is great, on a windy day. When it's not windy, I have to laugh. It looks like we're surrendering. I mean, it just hangs there, and all it is is a white flag. Do we really need that, since the off-ramp says Thousand Oaks and the building says Thousand Oaks? I mean, seriously, drive by there and take a look. The other thing is, with Adams, I think that you could go a long way and cure a lot of ills and actually bring a lot more peace to the valley if you'd allow him back on the board. Diversity is what America's about. Do you understand what I'm saying? But third, on the auto mall, I spent the week calling North Carolina, South Carolina, dealing with these cities that are dealing with these signs, and I suggest you do the same, especially South Carolina. You'll run into a bunch of characters. They're great people. I had to wait for one mayor to get back from pig hunting so that he could call me back the next day. He gave me a number to a small town where, on Christmas Day, a 17-year-old kid hacked into the computer at Rouse Furniture Mark and put up Deep Throat. Well, they couldn't find him on Christmas Day, so they had to shut down the whole mall. And there's a lot of other things that you haven't even considered. Once these signs start to go up, the salesmen come into town, excuse me, the salesmen come into town, and they start selling these things for the inside of these windows, and they come in all shapes and sizes. And as good as our city attorney is, she's not going to be able to defeat the First Amendment, and you've given them a media. And when these towns try and stop what they put on, like, well, there's a bunch of funny ones. I just don't want to, I just, it would be rude to say those here. But you're really going into trouble. Now, there is an answer, and there is a deal to be made here, but the way this is going about it, what you have is a billboard with an auto mall sign designed around it. Now, every other state in the Union, every other town calls them billboards, but here they're called advisory signs, which curiously is allowed out there, but billboards aren't. And I really think that you need to give this some hard thought, and do yourself a favor, call these cities and see what they're dealing with. Some of the cities couldn't even talk to me because they're in litigation, because when you try and put the brakes on these signs, their lawyers come in and fight you. Seriously, it's a real nightmare out there. So please, just take the time and give these people a call. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Lundy. Suzanne Duckett, John Fonti.
Tonight, I remember the planning commission. The other night, I was in a hurry to get to my wife's birthday.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I want to thank Baxter for hosting their science programs. I went, finally went, last Thursday because I wanted to find out about D-SAL plants in the ocean. And it was wonderful. It was attended by lots of high school students as well as the general public. The phones finally were turned off, so it was well-attended, and it was a great program. The second thing I want to do, and I've been remiss about this, is thanking CLU for hosting HIV/AIDS educational programs yearly. I attended the last program, and it was wonderful. And I can tell you, those college phones went off immediately. So parents out there, there's always hope. When your kids get a little older, the phones go off faster. The third thing I want to do is call everybody's attention to 12A, which is on the agenda tonight, which is Al Adam. And anyway, I want people out there to watch this. I brought my daughter, when she was in elementary school, to this podium to see what liars and cheats look like. And tonight, we do have some people who may have different faces and different names, but hopefully I won't give you the same title as I gave the previous group, Liars and Cheats. And finally, with that same kind of thought process in my head, I want to thank all the dissidents out there that come to these meetings, because if we didn't have dissidents and people who watch what happens in our city, we would be having elections today for new city council people, because, believe me, this city was on the same path that Bell was on. Without dissidents here and people watching what goes on in this city, you have absolute corruption. So I want to thank all of the dissidents and all of the people who watch these city council meetings and pay attention to what happens in the newspapers and are informed. Thank you.
John Fonti is our last speaker.
John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Mitnick to clarify the future date for the auto mall sign meeting. At the last city council meeting, he had mentioned that April 12th is going to be the next meeting. I'd just like to get him to comment later with regards to the latest date. On a more important topic at the moment is the fate of your benefits, Mr. Fox. You'll soon be deciding the fate of your own city benefits, especially the granddaddy of them all, the expensive lifetime medical benefits you're all entitled to after only five years of service and 50 years of age. According to newspaper reports and people who work for you and within other sectors of government, you can't reduce your own benefits because of legal liability. Basically, that says that if you vote against this benefit, then you can sue the city. I've never heard of such a cockamamie argument before, ever. Claudia Bill de La Pena has already said she would support the elimination of lifetime medical. That leaves four of you who appear not to want to give it up: the free government benefits, the elixir of public service. I'm going to read from the Acorn from a couple of weeks ago. For the current council, council members Glancy and Irwin suggested a city-paid contribution not to exceed $1,400 a month to cover the cost of an individual or family health plan selected by the council member. It would remain a lifetime benefit for current council members. That $1,400 allowance is being recommended to soften the blow for current council members and their families who have been budgeting for the full city-paid premium, said city attorney Amy Albano. "I think it's reasonable," says Ms. Irwin. Reasonable? That's equal to your current council's salary. I say to you, do not hide under a bogeyman defense. You should all vote 5-0 and stop the excess, and stop wasting time with meetings and false arguments. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. We'll move to item seven, the city and redevelopment agency consent calendar. Do we have any requests for Ms. Irwin?
I'd like to pull 7D.
Ms. Bill de La Pena?
I would like to pull items 7I and J.
Any other requests? All right, how about a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Mayor, we do have some public comment cards.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lawrence. We do have some speaker cards. Nick Kidway, Debbie Gregory, John Fonti.
Nick Kidway, Director of Concerned Citizens, Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor Fox, I promise you, this is funnier than what's happening with Charlie Sheen, if you have a good sense of humor. If TO TV can show the overhead, this is my memo that I wrote. It's a timeline for my interview with councilmember Claudia and Mayor Pro temp Jackie on Wednesday last week for a chance to be on the Air Pollution Control District. I arrive at parking structure at 4:50 and see councilmember Claudia arrive too. Staff member apologizes, has no councilmember here. I tell him, "Claudia is here." Mayor Pro temp Jackie arrives at 5:05 p.m. and apologizes. 5:08, Claudia arrives, rushes back. Staff again apologizes that councilmember is on a conference call. Remember, my appointment was at 5:00, and there was another lady at 5:15 who arrived promptly and was sitting there waiting for the appointment. 5:10, all of a sudden, I was surprised to see Dr. Glancy pop in, and a well-dressed former council candidate, Milan Brandon, shakes his hand and smiles. 5:15, this is the real punchline. Dr. Glancy goes about sharpening his hatchet that he keeps on his desk by the pond. This really happens. Every day at 5:15, Dr. Glancy can be seen sharpening his hatchet, and the hatchet is on his desk. If you don't believe me, go and ask the city attorney. Next candidate, Carol, is waiting now. At 5:20, apologizing, I'm called in. Interview, I thought, went very well because there were jokes and vice cracks. Then discovered that the former candidate with a three-page, weak resume had Tom's ear, and maybe for half an hour, he was talking with him or whatever, and he gets appointed. And, you know, people were talking about, you know, that there should be no politics, and people should be appointed based on credentials, and people have a right and it's democracy. I mean, if you're not part of either two cliques, you're not appointed. That's the way it is. The more important thing is that the council put on the agenda that there will be a report on the redevelopment agency money, and it's, from what I understand, $6 million. And then there was only one report provided, an activist had it, so I couldn't read it. Nobody else could read it. This was faxed. I sent the other fax asking why these things are happening, and lo and behold, it's just like the old days. My faxes are going into the trash can. Mayor, is there any reason? I mean, you're not looking down to me. I mean, what am I doing? I mean, I'm some kind of idiot that's standing over here? Why are these things thrown in the trash, and why is not, I mean, is there going to be some follow-up? I mean, is this an American city, or this is, I'm in Libya, or the former Egypt?
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Debbie Gregory, John Fonti. Item 7. Okay.
I was amazed tonight, looking at the consent calendar, item I. I was under the impression, as were most citizens, that $2 million from the redevelopment agency is being given to the Auto Mall for the improvements. And I have heard Susan Marata of the Auto Mall go on and on many times about how we're not paying for the proposed sign, it's coming out of their money. But in this item, buried in the consent calendar, which if we hadn't caught it, is another $6.6 million for a total of $8.6 million. That would be approved without any discussion through the consent calendar. Now, there was a report that is supposed to be accompanied, funding agreement with the Auto Mall Association, to be provided prior to the city council meeting. I was here, it wasn't there till 10 minutes of 6. You're talking about $8.6 million. It's not monopoly money. It's not money you're printing at City Hall, or maybe you are. It's our money. And it needs discussion. And the terms, if you're going to loan it to the Auto Mall, the entire amount, it needs to be made public. Now, there's some things in the report that I was able to quickly read and I didn't get to study it. But I believe these documents, per the Brown Act and public records, need to be disclosed 72 minutes before, 72 hours before meeting. I don't know how any of you can read a supplemental packet of this magnitude. But there were a couple of things. It's going to be a 30-year term and interest will be at the current five-year treasury rate. The city or the Auto Mall has to have legal acquisition and possession of the private property that's adjacent. I assume this is the property owned by the lady where the sign is going to be. And I'd like to know if the city is in negotiations to purchase that property. I think we have a right to know. And I think you need to disclose it. I don't remember hearing the council authorizing the city to enter, staff to enter into negotiations. When you're putting, bearing some, this kind of money in the consent calendar without discussion, without the funding report, it's more than egregious. It's criminal, I think. And I really want to hand you a public records request to the city clerk, asking for all the financial records related to the Auto Mall, for documents showing all money spent and committed to the Auto Mall improvement to date. And this copy, sign. I'm also going to be contacting the state controller. I think the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency clearly needs to be audited. I can't believe how cavalier you are with our tax dollars, that you would put this in the consent calendar. And it's really very slick and egregious. Thank you.
John Fanti.
John Fanti, Thousand Oaks. And I would have to concur with Ms. Gregory if there is a potential Brown Act violation with regards to the release of this document only minutes before the council meeting. I've been trying to get a hold of this document since Friday. I've been ignored. I've been told that it won't be available till 5:30, no matter what, and that you guys will only get it just prior to the meeting also. So, I don't know how you can review a multimillion-dollar agreement in just a few minutes before the council meeting. It's just unbelievable. You should definitely defer this to a later meeting because I think the, as Ms. Gregory pointed out, she didn't really get into the financial benefit of the sweetheart terms that are given to the Auto Mall. Five-year treasury rate over 30 years for this $6.6 million of loan from the city? I don't know. My top, off-the-top-of-my-head calculations, and I am a CPA, by the way, I could see that being worth maybe $5 million bucks. Could anybody else get such sweetheart terms? If another Auto Mall went out to try to go into the commercial marketplace and get a 30-year loan, I don't think they'd be getting a rate at five-year treasury rates. It's like free money to them. And then, as Ms. Gregory mentioned, with regards to the acquisition of property where the proposed Auto Mall sign sits on, that's going to be coming out of the total $8.6 million. It's the first time, I think, all of us are hearing this. And I wish the council would pay attention. I think you're in a pickle with regards to the acquisition of this property. Because right now, the Auto Mall, the shape, size, and especially the LED billboard portion of the Auto Mall is in play. That property, if that LED billboard is approved, that property would be worth millions for sake of the advertising that will be saved by the Auto Mall. If you had to spend millions on that property, you'd wipe out most of that $6.6 million portion from the Auto Mall. And who knows how much else? It's just, this whole thing is crazy to even consider at this time. Thank you.
That was all the public comment cards for item 7. Now, do we have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar? Ms. Irwin?
7I is pulled, right?
7D, 7I, and 7J.
I just wanted to make sure. I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
All right, Ms. Irwin moves the balance of consent calendar discussion, please. Vote.
Motion carries 4-0. Councilmember Gillette Abson.
All right, that is approved. Item 7D.
I guess my first question on 7D is to the city attorney. I just am reading the report right now. Is there a requirement that the report is out 72 hours ahead of time?
No. The Brown Act requires that the agenda is posted 72 hours ahead of time, and these were all listed on the agenda.
Okay. Well, then, I, since I did not have time to read this, because I just got this right this evening, maybe I could have somebody explain to me about this agreement between the City of Thousand Oaks and the RDA to lease theaters in the parking garage from the RDA.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. What has happened with the state budget proposed by Governor Brown? One of the things that they're proposing is taking away the redevelopment agency. And the vote won't happen until probably next week. And this is only council meeting between now and then. What we are finding is that we have assets that are owned by the redevelopment agency, and that is the theaters, when we're sitting in here, the Cavalier Theater and the parking garage. And it was built with redevelopment money. It's sitting on general fund land. So, what we are doing is just making an agreement that was never made for the operations of the theater, for the benefit of the theater, using facilities that were built with redevelopment agency funds, and putting that in memorialized agreement, talking about the duties of both the groups and what their responsibilities are to each other. And it's just something that we need to do to protect ourselves so that we have that asset as available to the city under a 99-year agreement.
Okay. Actually, I'm glad you explained that. And that is, so that's just one of those things that wasn't thought of?
It's a cleanup item particularly because we have not, we never really acknowledged that relationship. So, that's all we're doing in this agreement, is acknowledging the relationship between the theater and the city and the redevelopment agency.
And what would happen if we didn't do this?
Well, does Amy want to, looks like Amy wants to respond. I mean, the thing is, is we've got, we don't really know what the legislation's proposing. But one of the things is, is that there'd be a successor agency that would take over all the assets of the redevelopment agency. And so, we don't have that kind of, we don't have any control over the assets at that point. So, that's the main reason this proposal's come forward.
So, any city that has, let's say, a stadium or theaters or anything like that owned by the redevelopment agency, that's all going to have to be passed over to counties?
That's our understanding from reading the legislation at this point.
That's pretty far-thinking. Wow. Okay. Well, I will, unfortunately, I don't like that this was done at the last minute, but I will move 7D to protect the parking garage and theaters from seizure.
All right, Ms. Irwin moves 7D. Discussion on her motion. All right, hearing none, vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
As approved. Item 7I.
Item 7I deals with the funding agreement with the Auto Mall Association and, in particular, the $6.6 million loan at an extremely low rate. I was not aware that that was in the works with the Auto Mall. And I realize that there was now a report that was presented, or the actual agreement that was printed and presented and given to the council at 5:40 or so. I think this is a major issue. And something as important as a $6.6 million loan should have more discussion and more time. I feel extremely uncomfortable approving this tonight. I will definitely not be able to support this. So, that's item I.
All right, Mr. Mitnick, did you want to comment on item 7I?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this issue has been before you. There are two components here. The $2 million that the redevelopment agency and city council appropriated, I think in 2007, that was $2 million. That's the city/redevelopment agency share for the parking and landscaping improvements, that type of thing. The other piece was going to be the amount that the Auto Mall dealers themselves pay, they fund, and that's $6.6 million. We have disclosed that to the council. It's been discussed in a public setting. And it was the intention all along for there to be a loan to the auto dealers through a community facilities district and that the city/redevelopment agency would fund the money, or loan the money, and then they would pay it back. We anticipated doing that later, after the bids come in. The bids are coming in, I think, later this week or next week for the work. And that is moving along. And there was a question asked about the timing of the revised drawing for the sign, which is a component that the auto dealers will take care of, that we're waiting to get a revised proposal from the auto dealers. So, that could be weeks away. But we're trying to preserve the integrity of these funds because of the uncertainty in Sacramento and what may or may not happen to the redevelopment agency funds. This is an effort to protect those funds. This is not committing the council in any way in terms of the project. It is just putting the mechanism in place and protecting local property tax dollars. That's all it is. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. There will be a process going forward for the project itself.
Any further questions? Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mitnick, comment, please, if you would, on the interest rate on the loan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In terms of setting an interest rate, we try to find one that is equitable and fair and reasonable and makes sense. The goal here is not to try to take advantage or have arbitrage or anything like that. We're earning about, I don't know what the portfolio is today, about 1.2, 1.5.
Yes, 1.3.
1.3. But this is a multi-year loan, so we're trying to guess at what would be the average over a period of time. This is a reasonable rate at 3%. It is true, if you go to market, the rate would be higher. If we were to try to borrow money as a redevelopment agency, because of the uncertainty in Sacramento, the rates are 300 basis points above normal. They're 6% to 10%. And I don't know what the taxable rates would be if the Auto Mall itself tried to do it. It would be probably in that area, maybe a little bit lower, I don't know. But we're trying to be helpful to the Auto Mall and have a reasonable rate while protecting the taxpayers. And at 3%, there would be actually an arbitrage gain. So, we just have to be equitable and fair about that.
Ms. Irwin?
Again, as in the previous item, I feel kind of uncomfortable that we're being rushed into this. What parts of this have to be passed this evening? Can we not agree, let's say, on the interest rates or the terms of the loan, but in general, you know, look at the possibility of loaning the money? Or does that have to be set this evening? I have no idea if 3% is reasonable or is a gift of public, I have no idea until, I mean, we haven't had a chance to look at this at all. So, there's a timing issue, I understand. What parts of it have to be passed this evening?
I don't know if the city attorney or Candy want to comment on that component.
Thank you, council, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, and members of the public. Part of it, the reason we put those terms in, and it's, would be based on a five-year average at the time that the proceeds were actually going to be withdrawn, and it would be contingent on the community facilities district actually being formed, which means that the Auto Mall is forming an assessment district to pay back. And the reason we did that is, if there were no terms, then it leaves it subject to, that they could pay 0% and we didn't want to have that. Under the statute that's, the legislation that's pending, it has to be a committed deal. That's why the money would be going into an escrow account for these purposes. So, we try to list out things that made it very clear in the sense that there wouldn't be discretion. If these things are met, then the loan would be made. We could put a higher amount in as a starting point, a lower amount. We try to say up to this amount. And, you know, we're really trying to firm up something and make this agreement as tight as possible. That's really what it comes down to because you don't want to leave things that are, looks very discretionary or illusory for the agreement.
Well, I would have a hard time supporting it like this unless there's some way to make it more that we can set a rate later on. Maybe that there's a higher rate to begin with or, you know, I don't know if these are reasonable terms and I can't pass this, getting the report just this evening.
Again, no, John, do you want to comment on the rates? But we are, we are trying to protect our local property tax dollars.
I understand that. I'm asking if there is some way to put it that we can look further at this as opposed to just getting this today.
Yeah. John, do you want to comment on the interest rates?
I want to comment quickly on the.
Maybe in comments, Mr. Adams, you can, if there is another example that you can give in terms of other agencies, what other agency has done. I think it's important to point out, this is not new. Every city in the state of California is being attacked. All you need to do is open up the newspaper. The governor's proposal is taking very, very severe cuts to local governments. If we were not taking some action, I'm not arguing one or the other, many people would be down here complaining about our staff being asleep as a switch. So, these are local dollars. They were intended to be local. And the whole point here is we're trying to keep them local in a very, very dynamic environment.
Mr. Adams?
Okay. The first comment I want to make is that the terms here really set the floor for what the interest rate is. It's the lowest that we, that the city will accept. What's more important is, is that we do a lot of redevelopment loans currently, mostly in housing. And those rates are at 3% simple interest. It has nothing to do with what the market will bear, but it's, you have to remember, these are for public improvements. What they are funding are streets, you know, the curbs, the landscaping. And so, the question for us is, if they are, if they are funding $6.6 million of the $8.6 million in public improvements, what is a fair rate to charge for them to pay it back over a certain term? We put a top or a ceiling on how long the loan will be, and we also put a floor on how much the interest rate would be. So, as an example of an interest rate, when Scott, the city manager, had mentioned the 3%, very common for us when we're talking about housing loans with our partners, that we're doing 3% simple interest. And so, the five-year treasury at the time was simply to set a floor. And so, those are my two comments related to the interest rate and the terms of the agreement.
And council, we'll get to weigh in at the time we do the community facilities district. We'll have more of a say in how that process looks. So, there will be opportunity at that point to be setting what the interest rates may look like. There will be much more opportunity for council to weigh in. So, that sort of piggy... So that sort of piggybacks on to what, how Mr. Adams explained what, that that's the floor. So it's, that's the least amount that we will get, and there is an opportunity to look at this when we set up the whole funding structure.
The other thing I wanted to share with the council is, I think we all recognize this came with the report, was not customary in terms of our advance notice. Mr. Minnick and I have been meeting with the mayors and the city managers of other cities. I would welcome anybody to take a look at what Simi and Moore Park and virtually every other city in the state of California is doing. This proposal is not new. It has been well thought out by the city staff. It is obviously legal. It is obviously well within what city government can do. And again, I think as Mr. Adams points out, in terms of interest rate, and that's why I asked him, it is not uncommon for what we've done in other similar circumstances. The broader picture here is we're trying to protect local property tax dollars, and we're doing it in an environment that if we don't act and legislation is passed, those dollars are gone. And, or we're in a very expensive legal battle. So again, I think we just need to keep focused on what it is we're trying to accomplish. And the fact that this came about on a, I guess, my question for you, Mr. Minnick, is what was the rationale behind putting this on a consent calendar as opposed to making it a regular agenda item?
It was a holding pattern. It could have easily been on a department report. So we fully expected it to be pulled. This was a very dynamic process. It was very fluid all the way up until the meeting. We were trying to also figure out what was happening up in Sacramento, so...
Right. And I can tell the council that both the cities of Simi Valley, Moore Park, and Thousand Oaks were trying to determine the timing and the action that we were going to take, if and when we were going to take any action at all. So hopefully that'll give you guys some insight into why this is here this evening.
Further questions? Ms. Irwin?
I'm, I understand everything you're saying. I, and obviously, we have to take, this is a unique situation because of what's happening in the state. But how can it be put that the interest rate is not, until we fully understand, no, interest rates are going to be going up, obviously, at some point. We have no idea whether this is a reasonable rate or not. Can we, is it, can it, it doesn't, wasn't very clear to me in the report. Now, of course, I read it really quick, that that's a starting point or an absolute minimum. Can we do a range? Can we do something else to make this?
We can, if, perhaps...
Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
I mean, if there, for the council, if there is another benchmark they would like to use, I think we use the five-year treasury at the time, just because it's a very recognizable number that you can look at, at the point which those loans, which those funds are loaned. If you want to do 10-year treasury, if you want to do what our rolling 10-year average on our portfolio has been, there's all sorts of different ways we can do it. The question ultimately is, what will, I shouldn't say what's reasonable, but what ultimately will the Auto Mall use to fund this project? And I think that's the other balance, is to try to have this range. We need to define it, and if your concern is having a certain dollar amount...
If Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
If your concern is having a certain interest rate, we can write that into the agreement.
My concern is that it's a reasonable interest rate for everybody involved, that it's the right index. And just hearing it this evening, I'm not convinced of that. So, I mean, maybe my fellow council members feel differently, but if there was some way that, you know, that the interest rate can be determined at, you know, convince us that it's the right thing, and doing it this evening is a little, a little difficult for me. Maybe everybody else understands it better.
Let me ask this question. Is it possible to revise the interest rate? Can we take the action needed tonight to protect the dollars? And if staff can bring back a revised interest rate at the next meeting with different options, with a separate staff report? Because admittedly, based on your information tonight, Mr. Adams, there are other options, but I don't want to just have a, you know, pick, you know, shoot in the dark contest here.
Let's step back, just let me step back for one second. The question Amy is asking me is, can we reset it at some future date? The concern is, is that the redevelopment agency is taking this action, and you're approving an agreement that has a certain rate. If we say, this rate, we'll come back and do it later, the agency, in theory, may not be able to take any action if this legislation is passed. The only action that will be taken is by successor agency. The successor agency will be made up of six county representatives, one city representative. So the question then becomes, will the successor agency provide a rate that's reasonable and to the benefit of our community? And so the question is, from an interest rate side, is trying to determine what that rate is, we need to do it as part of the agreement now. We can't come back later and determine a rate at some later point. Now, if the, if the state is not successful in eliminating redevelopment agencies, then we have that option. But at this point, we need to determine a rate or some benchmark that seems to be reasonable. And the other aspect of it is, if we determine, and I'll use the 10-year treasury, 10-year treasury right now is about 3.5, 3.4. Certainly, rates could rise. It could get over 4, could get close to 5%. And then the question for the Auto Malls, is the project now affordable? And if they back out, the project isn't built, and we lose the money either way. So I understand the concern about the interest rate, and is it fair and reasonable? Ultimately, the interest rate that's provided for this loan is to build public improvements, improvements that ultimately will benefit not just the Auto Mall, but the community in general. And that's really the purpose of us loaning the money and helping the financing of this project. If we went to market, the redevelopment agency, as Scott said, a lot of redevelopment agencies have been in the market in the last two weeks. Rates are at 8 to 9% for good public benefit projects, parks, community centers. But because of the uncertainty, the rates are extremely high. I think when we say a five-year treasury, that rate right now is 100 basis points over what our portfolio is earning. Certainly, over a five-year average for our portfolio, it's about 3.5%. We can change the terms if you have a specific interest rate you'd like to negotiate or to put in, and we can write the terms accordingly. But we can't come back later and determine an interest rate, because we might not have the authority to do that as an agency.
Can we determine, pick a, let's say, if we'd say the 10-year rate or the 20-year rate, and then lower it later?
I personally believe we can't.
Amy?
I was going to say, if the legislation passes, then it will not be your decision, if it could be lowered. So if you pick a 20-year and you want to have a lower amount, and the redevelopment agency no longer exists and it's a successor entity, then that decision would not be made here. It would be made elsewhere. That's why we try to form it with the terms of the debt to be purchased shall have an interest rate no less than the current. The other reason, besides John saying we, the opportunity down the road may not exist to negotiate a different amount, like he was just saying, if the agency goes away, the other, my other concern is that we don't, there's no guarantees, obviously, but we're trying to do an agreement that takes all the guesswork out so that it cannot be attacked, and that it meets the definitions of an obligation under the legislation as proposed. And that's why we were trying to be careful, so that if we had no terms in there, then arguably, it could be a 1% or a 0%. We were really concerned about doing that, so we're trying to find something in the middle. If the council is more comfortable saying a rate no less than the current 10-year, we can do that. And if we want to make it clearer that the current 10-year at the time of the loan, we can add that language. But from a legal standpoint, I think it really is important, under the legislation that we, that the council acts now.
Ms. Bill O'Leary?
Can this item not be brought back at the next council meeting with various options? The legislate, I'm sorry, Scott, did you want to?
I would caution council to take action tonight because of what's going on in Sacramento.
Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
What is the highest rate that we can use that would be appropriate within the RDA environment?
We can set any rate we want. The question is, what can the Auto Mall, what will the Auto Mall ultimately agree to, and what can they afford to make this project move forward? You know, we can, as far as negotiations with them, you know, 5, 6, 7%? I don't think that the Auto Mall ultimately can afford, I mean, for these public improvements, that will increase the costs substantially for them to repay this over, over a long period of time. I mean, these are property owners who ultimately are paying $6.6 million of these public improvements. And so any rate, as we increase the rate, the costs increase for them, and makes the project less likely to move forward. And this is simply for the public improvements, landscaping, the streets, curbs and gutter.
Thank you.
I just want to point out two items. First, we've already given $2 million of redevelopment agency money to the Auto Mall for these exact improvements. And I believe that was a 5-0 vote, wasn't it, Mr. Minnick? 5-0 vote. So the entire city council thought it was a good idea that the street improvement, these public improvements, would be made. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we've heard from city staff that the terms and conditions of the loan, which are essentially have been driven because of what's happening at the state, is reasonable, it is fair, and it is tied to an existing index, an index that we used in other redevelopment agency loans and, in dealing with other redevelopment agency issues. I think council has to ask itself a question. Are we interested in basically financing the Auto Mall out of a project that we've given them $2 million to accomplish? Or are we interested in providing a loan that is absent the action for the state? Certainly would not be happening in this fashion, but also provides for a reasonable return for the city. It is not a gift of public funds. And it was anticipated by city staff that we would be doing this anyway somewhere down the road. To me, it seems pretty clear that it, to increase an interest rate, to possibly price the Auto Mall out of improvements that the council has basically endorsed and given redevelopment money for, candidly makes no sense whatsoever.
Dr. Glancy?
Thank you. I, I think a couple of problems are associated with this. One is that we had no, no lead time to really take a look at this. It's a very important issue. I think it's paramount that we do protect our monies, because sure shooting, if we don't, if we're asleep at the wheel and we lose that money, there's going to be more uproar than there has been about the sign. So I agree that it's an extremely vital issue that we have to deal with. My interest in looking at a higher rate was getting a rate that would be reasonable to the city, and yet not put the Auto Mall out of business and trying to do the project with that number. But above all, I think it's extremely important that we protect our monies. Thanks.
Ms. Bill O'Leary?
The deadline, Governor Brown's deadline for the budget was a self-imposed deadline of this Thursday, and it's not happening because he's missing two votes, two Republican votes in the Assembly and two in the State Senate. So we don't know when a vote will be taken or if a budget will even be passed. I think that we have the time for the next council meeting to discuss this issue more in-depth and with more clarification, and actually more time than receiving a report just a few minutes before the city council meeting.
Mr. Minnick, what is the, you know, I'm going to have you looking at a crystal ball here, or, I don't know if I mean this here, what is the, hypothetically, if this legislation would pass, what is the soonest it could possibly pass?
That's an outstanding question. It could be next week, or it could take a few more weeks. The difficulty, and we've been talking with our legislators, our state senator and our Assembly member daily, we've been talking to our outside lawyers daily, other consultants and so on, other, other cities, sometimes many, several different times during the day. The current bill that's out there, and it's quite lengthy, it's like 30 pages, it actually has retroactive dates, going back to January 1. Now, to the extent to which it can do that, that's a big question mark. There's all these, and Proposition 22 works its way in here. The advice that we are being given is to move forward on these type of issues as quickly as possible to minimize our risk. So this is a risk calculation that you will take tonight. If your goal is to preserve the redevelopment property tax increment revenues, then you need to move forward tonight. If you're willing to take a risk that we may lose these funds, that's your decision. But we would strongly advise you to move forward where we really need to protect the $2 million that was appropriated in 2007. Again, as we talked about earlier, the $6.6 million, that is just, this is putting the mechanism in place. And once there is a project, then the, then the next step would take place. So you are strongly advised to take action tonight to preserve your tax dollars. It is really that simple.
Ms. Albano?
Thank you. I also want to point out that if they took a vote next week and it passes, as soon as the governor signs this legislation, it goes into effect. We don't have, typically, state law takes till January 1 to take effect, not in this case. So we won't have any lead time. So all we know right now, sitting here, is that there, a vote could happen as early as next week. And we don't have another council meeting till April 12th, and I would have, all of us, I think, grave concern, if you've been following what's happening in Sacramento, that, I'm sorry, March 22nd, but that still, that things could happen before that because of deadlines for getting the tax bills on the ballot. So that's why we're urging for tonight.
Ms. Irwin?
Well, I'm sorry to keep beating this, but maybe if we have to make this decision tonight, maybe you can explain to me once more, when would you use the five-year treasury rate? And when would you use, I mean, we've, we've done these type of loans before, other agencies have done these type of loans. When would you use a 10-year, the 10-year rate? How, how did you come up with this rate? And is it unreasonable to do the 10-year rate? It's a 30-year loan. I mean, it's really awful that I'm saying, you need to convince me right here, but apparently we have no choice.
Understood. Remember, when we wrote this language, city attorney's office wrote this language, it was to set a floor. And so the floor was the five-year treasury. Certainly, if we want to set an exact one, a 10-year treasury is a reasonable rate in determining, I mean, long-term loan, if it's 20 or 30 years. The other, and I want to make this other comment about the rate, remember that the term is also a max. And so if they have a 15-year, let's say they decide to finance it over 15 years, they might require a smaller rate. So as far as negotiating or having that discussion, the five-year was just to set the floor, based on not knowing what the term would be because of what they can actually afford. If you want to set a certain rate, we can put 3% in. 3% we use often for housing projects that are funded through the redevelopment agency. 3% simple interest is very common for us, and is very common for redevelopment agencies throughout the state in setting up these type of loans. If you want to benchmark it to the 10-year treasury, that would also be reasonable, but you're also setting that rate and not allowing it to be changed. So we can do a 10-year treasury if you like. I think, again, the five-year was simply the floor of the, for, for the agreement.
All right. Mr. Adams, if we were to put this off, notwithstanding the caution that both city attorney and city manager have vindicated, what new information would you bring back to the council on the 22nd relative to the rates that you haven't shared with us tonight?
I'm not, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure. I mean, I guess the question is...
Just so you know, that's pretty much what I expected, but I wanted to get it out there, is would there be any new information that you would provide council?
We could, I mean, I guess we could come up with what we've earned on our portfolio over 10 years, over 20 years, over 30. I mean, we have that information, we can certainly provide it. But again, it's how do we make it and encourage the Audemall to do the project and build these public improvements? As you stated, we have committed $2 million. We've already spent almost $400,000 on the design and everything else to get us to the point in which we're going to get bids back next week.
So, if I heard you correctly, we could, we could provide a higher interest rate and, in a sense, make more money on the Audemall, if that was our interest. The risk we run is, one, we could price the project out of construction, so we get no construction.
Correct.
Or, and I guess that's really it, as is the other one, or the Audemall would just determine, it's too expensive, we're not going to do it.
Correct, correct. What can they, ultimately, what can they afford when they're paying for ultimately three-quarters of the project? And again, this has been a partnership since 2007, trying to resolve their parking issues, our commitment of the $2 million. We want to help them, and that's always been the plan, to finance and buy the bonds from the CFD. The RDA would have bought the bonds from the CFD. Based on the legislation, we need to take action to at least provide that financing mechanism to the Audemall. So, as far as what we would provide, we could provide other benchmarks that we could use, but again, I think we can do that now. I don't know if I can give you a rate, but if we want to do the 10-year treasury, that rate, we will determine at the point in which the loan is made. It would be set at that point. It would be higher, it'd probably be 100, 120 basis points higher. That's a third of an increase on their interest paid. An interest paid on a 6.6 million dollar loan is going to be, is going to increase the cost for them.
And so, at what point would you, from staff perspective, be advising the council that we likely have now priced the project out of construction? We don't know, but, you know, this is a, this is a finance issue.
Yeah. I think based on the circumstances, if we had a longer period of time, if we weren't under this sort of deadline with the state.
Right.
We would have had a longer discussion with them on that. I think that the problem is, is that we're also asking them to sign an agreement on, based on the uncertainty, for them to also secure the funding. And so, that's the other aspect. We're asking them to sign the other half. We have them sign this already. Would they be willing to do another interest rate that's reasonable? I assume so. How high? I'm not sure until we rerun numbers for them to show them what the cost is. But again, going up to the 10-year, you're raising it, you're raising interest costs 50%, going from 2.2 up to 3.5. You're increasing their interest cost.
All right, very good. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Ms. Bill de la Pena?
A point of order, please.
No, you may not. You already had your card.
City clerk?
Sorry, Mr. Kidway. I'd do it if I could. Yes?
Obviously, the Audemall needs to be a part of this discussion as well. I mean, I'd be more than happy to have a special council meeting just to approve this so that we can actually work this out, but I really don't have all of the information tonight to make a decision.
It's a pleasure at the council.
God, I love it. Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Clancy?
I am, I'm extremely unhappy with the amount of lead time we had to go over this. And if it weren't for the explanations of staff, there would be no going over at all. If we delayed it, what that would mean is that we would come back at the next meeting and we would more fully understand what the write-off says. The dilemma would still be, is the interest rate that's being proposed, a reasonable interest rate, one that's appropriate for the project, or whether it's way too low, it's a giveaway. And I think I could probably read this half a dozen times, and I would, it wouldn't help me in making that decision. So, as much as I am unhappy with the lead time, I feel stronger that we need to protect the money. And so, I would move the issue.
All right, Dr. Clancy moves item 7I, I believe. 7I, spin move. Discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Ms. Bill de la Pena?
I would really like to have more time to discuss this and have a special council meeting. We don't need to give 72-hour notice with an emergency meeting, and I think that that is something that can actually be worked out. I will not be able to support the motion because of the, some of the concerns that have not been answered, namely, not having been able to really discuss and negotiate a different contract or agreement with the Audemall. The Audemall isn't here tonight and going over this whole contract. I think that this is doable, having, calling for a special meeting and then going over all the details with a fine-tooth comb. So, respectfully, we'll not support the motion.
Any further discussion? Ms. Irwin?
So, what was the, I mean, how could we hold a special meeting? What would, what is the deadline? When does this have to be done by? Obviously, a lot of the council's out of town or ill.
The, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, come on.
Again, it's a risk you would take. We would strongly advise that you act on it tonight so we can lock up this money and protect the local assets. And if you try to pick a date out in the future, your next council meeting's on the 22nd. Try to do it sooner, you may not have a quorum because of schedules and so on. So, again, this project's been in the works, this works for many years. The funding terms have been shared with the council on multiple occasions. The project's out to bid this week, and we will come back to you with awarding the contract later, so you'll see the actual cost of it. So, we strongly encourage you to take an action tonight.
Ms. Irwin, any further questions? Okay, yeah, I'm certainly going to comment on the motion. To me, while this came to the council in an unorthodox fashion, I think staff has done a good job of outlining in a very methodical way and an easily understood way, first, how we got here, second, the mechanism by which, and their thought process by which, they made the recommendation, third, how staff tied it to other redevelopment agency projects, and fourth, I think Mr. Adams did a good job of aligning any assertions that this is some giveaway. The city attorney would not allow us to do that. That would be a gift to public funds, we would not be able to do that. You know, to me, it is a very basic notion that council's taken action, 5-0 vote, for these public infrastructure improvements. This is not about the Audemall sign. This has nothing to do with the Audemall sign. This is about landscape, this is about parking, this is about, universally, everybody in the community sees that these improvements need to be made. In fact, the city council's already used $2 million from redevelopment agency monies for this exact project. And now, because of what's happening in the state, staff is bringing to us a recommendation which is consistent, it's reasoned, and Mr. Adams has pointed out, there would be no new information that would come to the city council if we, quote, "held a special meeting," which would be very problematic due to scheduling. So, to me, I think it's a very straightforward issue, notwithstanding public comment. I think this is exactly what the city needs to be doing. As again, I would point out to the city council, this is not inconsistent with what many other cities are doing in the state of California. Mr. Minnick just reminded me, not that I would compare ourselves to the city of Los Angeles very often, but city of Los Angeles just did the very similar process and tied up over $1 billion in redevelopment monies for the city. Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, Simi Valley, other Ventura County cities are going to take, be taking these very similar actions. So, I certainly would support the motion. Dr. Clancy, you made the motion. Any final comments? All right, vote, please.
The motion carries 3-1 with council member Bill de la Pena dissenting and council member Gillette absent.
All right, that is approved. I think we have one more, item 7H? 7J?
Yes, thank you. Item 7J deals with the environmental impact report for a traffic study for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, a cost of $20,000. And my question is, I thought that the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and the city shared the costs. Is this, it doesn't look to me like this is being shared 50/50. Can you clarify that, perhaps? Thank you.
Yes, I can clarify that. The way the cost was to be split was that the Boulevard Association paid the cost of the consultant to prepare the draft specific plan, and that was the one that the council authorized preparation of the EIR for in 2009. And then, the other part of the arrangement was that the city, through the redevelopment agency, would pay for the cost of the EIR. So, this is the cost of the EIR.
Okay, so that's the total cost of the EIR, $20,000.
No, this is a change order to the traffic study part of the EIR.
And the total cost of the EIR with these $20,000 is how much?
I think the primary EIR consultant, which is Impact Sciences, was around somewhere in the $125,000 range. I don't know if Russ is here and remembers. I don't see him. And then, the traffic consultant, RBF, was separate, and this is the, summarized on page 101, their costs. The previously approved task orders have come to about $64,000, and then this would be another 20, so that'd be $84,000.
And how much percentage-wise is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association paying?
They're not paying any of the environmental impact report costs. They paid the cost of preparing the specific plan itself.
Which was how much?
I don't know that. It was probably in the same order of magnitude as the EIR costs. But that was, the city was not involved in any of the purchase orders for that or the funding of that. It was a direct cost of the Boulevard Association that they paid to their consultant, RRM.
Will there be any other change orders or additional requests for funding coming up regarding the specific plan?
I'm not aware of any. I think that there is a possibility that the primary environmental consultant, depending on the number and extent of comments that we receive on the draft EIR, there may be additional work that they will request a amendment to their contract for. But that's not foreseeable at this point in time.
And that will come before the city?
I believe so, yes. Oh, yes, definitely before the city.
Okay, I will approve this change order, but as we receive other change orders or additional requests for additional funds, I will reserve the right to deny those. So, I'll move item 7J.
All right, Ms. Bill de la Pena moves 7J. Discussion, vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 8 is the public hearings, continued from earlier, the purchasing code revisions. Oh, we continue that, that's right. All right. If there's no objection from council, Ms. Bill de la Pena had requested that we move item 12A up on the agenda before our study session. If there's no objection, all right, that'll be the order. Ms. Bill de la Pena, 12A.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. 12A deals with my appointment or nomination for a planning commissioner to the planning commission of Thousand Oaks. As we are all very well aware, my previous or my still current for now, planning commissioner Albert Adam was rejected by the council majority in January with very little explanation given, much to everyone's surprise. And of course, there were many outraged people in the community who had sent me emails, had given me or made phone calls, had written letters to the editor, and the reaction to that decision was, in my opinion, very profound. And I was saddened that a man of Mr. Adam's integrity and professionalism was rejected. And having received a lot of feedback from the community, including from supporters, so to speak, of the, I hate to say this because I don't want to label anyone the other side, I thought about it more and decided that this council needed to have a fresh start. The wounds need to heal. We have got to come together at some point in time. We cannot continue this bickering, in my opinion, and the discourse that we have experienced for eternity. And I believe, as I had mentioned publicly, a mistake was made with the rejection of Mr. Adam, and that this would actually be a wonderful opportunity to right a wrong and reconsider the previous decision made in January and actually restore Mr. Adam to the planning commission. He has done a phenomenal job in four years. He was set to become the chair of the planning commission. Instead, as he said, quoted in the paper, he got the door. So, that was unfortunate. And I have not had any discussions in detail, really, with any of my colleagues. I'm presenting this cold, so to speak, with a hope that my colleagues will be willing to reconsider their vote and realize that this has created a rift in our community, especially when you consider that supporters of the council majority disagreed with that decision. I think that is a crucial statement, and as I mentioned, a profound statement. I know that we will not always see eye to eye. We will always have, or often have differing opinions, but I urge you, I fervently urge you to set aside personal feelings, political opinions, and do what is right for our community. Our community is tired of actions such as the one in January. I see no reason why that needed to happen, and I would very much welcome a reconsideration of Mr. Adam's nomination to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Of course, for procedural reasons, I cannot just nominate him. First, I have to ask for a vote for reconsider, to rescind the previous decision. And based on the outcome of that vote, then I may or may not be able to nominate Mr. Adam. Mr. Adam, by the way, has been in the community for 30 years or more. He has been actually a 28-year resident of the Conejo Valley and received his degree from Rutgers University. He has been a financial advisor for a long, long time. He has served admirably on the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Board of Governors, a founding member, I believe. He has been on the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Program Committee. He was a member and passed chair. He was Alliance for the Arts member and is part of the Founder's Circle, the Founding 100. In fact, there is a plaque at the Civic Arts Plaza bearing his family's name. Al Adam has a great interest in his community. He cares about the community. He cares about the community very deeply, as do many of us, and no doubt, everybody sitting here on the dais. But there really isn't any room for actions such as happened in January. And again, I would like to, for my colleagues, to reconsider and rescind the previous decision. I'm sure we will have a few speakers before I make a motion regarding that. Thank you.
We do. Nick Forthingham, Carolyn Gujo, thank you for the phonetic spelling there, and Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nick Forthingham, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Please pardon my reading my remarks tonight. I'm sure it'll save us some time. I wish to address you tonight regarding Councilmember Bill de la Peña's request for approval of Al Adam's reappointment to the Planning Commission. While some may see this proposal as defiance of the council's January 25th decision regarding his candidate, I think that this is the only appropriate option available to Councilmember Bill de la Peña at this time. Candidates for Planning Commissioner must meet only very broad criteria. They must be a resident of Thousand Oaks and provide financial statements that may illustrate potential conflicts of interest with the commission's business. Al Adam has served on this commission for five years, providing ample opportunity to evaluate other personal traits. For example, does he attend meetings and participate in the commission's business as he exhibited non-feasance, misfeasance, or malfeasance in office? Your lack of objection to this candidates on any of these grounds suggests that Al Adam is fully qualified as a candidate for this office. To the best that I and other members of the public can determine, he's the best qualified available candidate for this position. I've heard the suggestion that your motive for rejecting his candidacy previously was based upon his failure to rubber stamp projects favored by a majority of the council. Obviously, I'm not in a position to judge your motives either in January or tonight. However, I would like to suggest to you that wise managers in government as well as in business know that the most valuable subordinates are those who will tell them the truth, not just what they want to hear. A former ANJAN executive once told me that the higher he rose in that organization, the more difficult he found it to learn the truth from his subordinates. So I urge you to consider Councilmember Bill de la Peña's nomination tonight on its merits alone. Thank you.
Carolyn Gujo, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Carolyn Gujo, Thousand Oaks. I don't have a prepared statement. I just want to say that in working with Al Adam, I feel that he is very well qualified. I feel that he has presented very reasoned opinions, and I feel like he represents the residents of Thousand Oaks very well. I hope you will consider strongly Claudia Bildelpeña's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick Kidway, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by Al Adam.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of concern sitting in Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor Fox. I would like to read into the record the information that I faxed, which is so horrible and dangerous that it cannot make it into your green packet. On February 14th, I sent this to the Planning Commission. It was on their supplemental packet. Are you folks aware as to what is happening in the world? The world is moving towards freedom and openness, love and cooperation, and you. Pause. We want Claudia to renominate Commissioner Adam, and since no cause exists for renomination, he should come back and take his rightful place as chair. How can you have a vote when technically you have only two planners who know anything about the commission? I'm talking about, they voted for a chair and vice chair, which was, I mean, I don't know. Maybe there are other cities that are better, but this ain't no way to do business. Please continue this vote, and I would like a vote on this at the start of the meeting per your own rules. Since I don't really support any side on the council, I wrote this suggestion of what really should be on the agenda, which you really folks have a chance to do, because your rules allow each council member to put two items on the agenda at every council meeting, and you're not taking advantage of it and being stingy, because I guess you want to go at home. I must write a protest that the real issues are never agendaized. And I mean, if the city clerk thinks that this is garbage and this is, what I've written does not belong here, I mean, just keep the agenda clean. I mean, why do you have to go through these things? It's not the first time of firing Planning Commissioner and having ridiculous votes of recusing themselves. Number one, have a direct mayor like Moore Park or Simi, and maybe an elected mayor or a full-time mayor with proper salary. Maybe having an election by a district would reduce the cost of running and would be more closer to making the people more responsive to 20,000 voters versus 75,000 voters. I've been saying this for 10 years. Kill the incumbent protection sign law, which is unconstitutional, that I cannot have two signs of Mr. Adams on my own front yard, because it has to be 100 feet apart. I mean, why, is there no time to do this? I mean, it's 8 o'clock, and we spend so much time on the consent calendar. Break out the redevelopment agency meeting from the city council meeting, as was recommended by the budget task force. Remove, one of the problems we have in this city, and I've been a follower for 20 years now, is remove the non-elected staff members from the dais. I mean, that's one of the biggest things. I mean, good cities like Agora Hills do not have that. And if CTO TV will show that, I mean, I always have to have some levity. I don't know if there's levity or not, but council member mentioned in a memo about healing. I mean, that's one healing. Google has a whole page on healing.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Gregory, followed by Al Adam, followed by Ron Segal.
I'm Debbie Gregory, and I'm here to speak on behalf of rescinding your vote and allowing Al Adam to serve this community. He's an honorable man, and your actions not only were hurtful, but damaged his reputation. He's a man that's given to this community on the Board of Governors, the Alliance for the Arts, the YMCA, and five years on the Planning Commission. I call things the way I see them, and let's be honest, Al Adam almost was sitting on that dais. Out of 100,000 votes, he was within 0.14% of winning, less than a 15th of one percentage point, 146 votes. And given that there were nine county areas in the county, he may have won. We don't know that. And that seems to be the only reason that you decided not to appoint him. I see you nominating people such as on the Traffic Commission, Commissioner Lemo, who works for a developer. You don't see that as a conflict of interest and objectivity. You said that Mr. Adam could not be objective. I wonder about your own objectivity. We need his leadership. Tonight's a perfect example. Fear, uncertainty, and doubt to give $7 million away of our money in the 11th hour without public input, without a report from staff, five minutes before the meeting, so that you could go through it. And I saw three council members capitulate on giving this money away. We need people that will be a good steward of our money, and Al Adam is a good steward of the money. And if you don't approve him, it's just political payback and retaliation. And it's clear to everyone in town, even your own supporters. Mr. Joe Gibson wrote a wonderful editorial about democracy and about tyranny. And I don't think the people of this community are going to take much more of this tyranny. I am someone that never supported recalls, but if things go on as they have with this council, then maybe it's in the best interest of the City of Thousand Oaks to consider it. I don't think we can afford this kind of nonsense for any, another year, any length of time. You really need to do what's right. You need to approve him. You know, there's a minority and there's a majority. You got a minority, a majority on a council, but Mrs. Bildelpeña got the majority votes more than any one of you. And 15,000 people voted for Mr. Al Adam. And you know what you're saying? We don't care. We're going to serve our own interests, not your interests. If you don't approve him, that's exactly what you're doing. It's absolutely clear, and people are not going to forget. I know you think we'll forget, we're not real smart or whatever. You're smarter than we are. You know better. You've told us that many times. But it's in the best interest of this city for you to approve Al Adam tonight. Thank you.
Al Adam, Ron Segal, John Fonti.
Well, good evening, council members. I am Al Adam from Thousand Oaks, and I must tell you it was a last-minute decision to come here this evening. I was going to watch it on television, take the easy way out, but you know, there's just too many people for me to thank. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilmember Bildelpeña for appointing me to the Planning Commission, allowing me to serve the city for four years, and especially for the support and encouragement you've given me over the last few weeks. You're sticking your neck out for me tonight, and I appreciate that very much. I would also like to thank the 15,000 people that voted for me. I walked door to door, as many of you have in your campaigns. I met a lot of great people. A lot of people love this city, as I do, and it was fantastic to meet them all. I want to thank a couple of my Planning Commissioners. Well, I want to thank the whole Planning Commission. I enjoyed working with all of them. I think we got along quite well. I want to thank particularly Commissioner Tina Grumney and Commissioner Barry Fisher. Their encouragement and support as well meant a lot to me over the last few weeks. So thank you to them. And Joe Gibson as well, from the Cano Wreckon Park District. I've known Joe a long time. We served on the YMCA board together. He stepped up and supported me, and I really appreciate that. The staff has been fantastic. You all know that. You work with them every day. Community Development Department has been great. Mark Towne, I know you're probably listening tonight. Thank you for your cell phone number, and thank you for being available on Sunday afternoons when I read my packets and I have questions. It's been really great. And I like to think, as Planning Commissioners, over the last four years, we all worked well together. I like to think that projects that came before us left better than when they originally were placed in front of us. And if they made it to the city council, they became even better after that. But that's the filter that everything goes through, and that's how we end up with a good project. I'm proud of the votes that we made. I'm proud of the improvements that we did for California Lutheran, the stadium that we voted on. I'm proud of the rehabilitation we voted for, for the hospital, for the Lowe's Development over the Seventh Day at Venice project. And I'm proud that we split the landscaping and parking from the auto mall sign, and I think the sign eventually will be done, and it'll be the best possible thing for the citizens and the auto mall here in Thousand Oaks. So I'm optimistic about that as well. That's really all I have to say. It's been a great experience for me, and I appreciate it very much, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Ronald Segal, followed by John Fonti, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening. I'm Ron Segal, and I'm humbled to follow such a great man as Al Adams at the podium this evening. One thing that this discussion tonight has done, and I think it's exposed Mayor Fox, the issue with Commissioner, or Planning, with Mr. Gatch and the issues that were enumerated in the grand jury report should be reviewed. The auto mall agreement this evening is also instructive. Why is it that Mayor Fox is the only one that seems to have known what was going on this evening? Everyone else seems to have been in the dark. And it's not because this is a new issue, because in the discussion this evening, it was pointed out that other municipalities knew about what was coming down from the state, and they've already made recommendations, and they've planned for the decrease in funds that are coming from the state. And that brings me to Al Adams. With little or no discussion, Al Adam was rejected by this council. And the only explanation was, that I can find, was that he's not objective. He's not objective because he doesn't agree with you. Plain and simple. This man has given of his time and his effort to make this city a better place, and what does he do? He gets slapped in the face for his efforts. And I think it's disgusting what this council has done. You've tarnished a good man's reputation for no reason other than, quote, "he was not objective." Your actions were decried by the Star, by the editor of the Star, and by the Acorn. And not only that, but a political ally of yours, Joe Gibson, it was pointed out, called your actions nothing short of tyranny. This was, especially by the mayor, is a heavy-handed abuse of power and discretion. And I think this evening, you have an opportunity to right a terrible wrong. Give a man who deserves more than what you've given him a chance to prove what he can do. And also, keep in mind, one of the other things that is very apparent is that the Thousand Oaks Association, there's going to be big decisions coming about planning of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As the future Planning Commission, the head of the Planning Commission that Mr. Adam was supposed to be, I think you should give him an opportunity to have that opportunity. Thank you.
John Fonti, followed by Suzanne Duckett, followed by Tina Grumney.
John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. First, I'd like to take my hat off to Al Adam for coming down here and speaking to you tonight, because I don't think I would have done the same thing. I would have just been, you know, so disgusted, I wouldn't appear before you guys. First off, I'd like to say you should break this agenda item into two pieces, Mr. Fox, one for the rescission, and if that fails, one for the new appointment. But I suspect you won't do that, because you really don't want to hear the public. So you're just going to get an opportunity to hear from us once tonight. I came here to support Al Adam and express my disgust at Mr. Fox, Mr. Gillette, and Mr. Clancy. I would like you all to look in the mirror tonight and see if you really like what you've become and what you represent. Power politics, and especially dirty politics, is now the standard in Thousand Oaks. You should apologize to Al Adam and let him serve on the commission, if that's what he still wants to do. Thank you.
Suzanne Duckett, followed by Tina Grumney, followed by Jerry Zucca.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. Another Planning Commissioner, who was a Planning Commissioner, who is not a present Planning Commissioner, thanked Al Adam for his contribution. And she said, as I recall, that he was the most informed, came prepared to every meeting. Now, how can you not vote for somebody who is absolutely prepared and educated to point out things to other people on the Planning Commission, your appointees, who are not that well-informed? Some of you guys should be embarrassed. So I want to thank that Commissioner, who happens to be the next speaker. I also want to thank her for becoming educated herself. She claimed that she, in the process, was a lot more informed about what the people do who run the city. And I want to thank her for becoming educated and informed. I also want to thank her for her past service. To say that these appointees are not political is an untruth. It's just a flat-out lie. Every single one of you up there went through the Planning Commission before you became city council people, except for Mr. Dennis Gillette, I believe. So to say that these appointees are not political is just a lie. So, to say that these appointees are not political is just a lie. So, step up and do the right thing tonight. Show us what you really are. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Grumney, followed by Jerry Zuka.
My name is Tina Grumney, and I'm a resident of Newbury Park. Good evening, Mayor Fox, councilmembers, staff, and guests. As a longtime resident of the city, I wanted to come down and offer my testimony regarding tonight's agenda item. We're living in difficult times. Financial issues are facing our city, as we heard this evening. It's also, we have our business citizens and residents who are also suffering with these pressures. Every night on the news, there is another story of how elected officials are not meeting the needs of their communities. We can even see the extreme of the abuses with the city of Bell. However, the city of Thousand Oaks is nowhere in comparison with the city of Bell. But I bring this to your attention, because there's a large trust of government that I'm seeing growing, and I know you have to agree with me. And it's for this reason, I believe, it would be in the best interest of the community that you reconsider your decision regarding Commissioner Adam. I have served with Commissioner Adam for the past five years on the Planning Commission, and we have agreed at times, and we have disagreed at times. Every time, I have found him to be respectful of my position, as I am of his. He has participated at every meeting, attended openings and events, and he comes to meetings prepared with a mindset to be open, fair, and objective. In the past, we've had Commissioners that thought the Planning Commission was a place to legislate, to make political statements, or to take dissenting opinions, that even voted against projects that would be in the detriment of the city of Thousand Oaks. Commissioner Adams is none of these, although I knew it was going to be a long meeting if there was anything in the report having to do with trees. I have a tremendous respect for all of you on the City Council, and I appreciate your countless hours that you spend above and beyond the call of duty. I understand the weight of the responsibility you hold, and I acknowledge that, as our elected representatives, you do have the right, and more importantly, the responsibility, to consider each candidate. However, please keep in mind, a Planning Commission that will best serve this community well is one made up of differing points of views and experiences. These perspectives, along with a commitment to their office, will produce the best result on projects brought before the Planning Commission. Our citizens want civil debate, thorough review, and thoughtful decisions. I am confident that you will make the best decision for our community.
Thank you. Jerry Zuka.
Hi. My name is Jerry Zuka. I'm a resident here of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here to support Al Adam. I don't know him personally, but I have been to the Planning Commission meetings. I've been to a few of them. And what I've seen is a person that does his homework, understands the issues that are being talked about, asks important questions, and has really done a great job. So, in order to help our city, we want good governance, and we need talented, intelligent people. And Al Adam is one of those persons, and we need him. So, please, help our city. That's why I'm here, not for him personally, because I want the best for our city. And to have him in the Planning Commission will help us. So, please do the right thing and have him on the Planning Commission. He's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all the speaker cards that we have. Ms. Bill Delapena, you have a motion?
Yes. Do we have any comment cards?
Oh, we do. We have 19 comment cards, all pro.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Before I make a motion, I would like to recite a council goal. It's Council Goal A, the very first goal on top of the list. And it says, "Provide municipal government leadership which is open and responsive to residents and is characterized by ethical behavior, stability, confidence in the future, and cooperative interaction among civic leaders, residents, business representatives, and city staff while recognizing and respecting legitimate differences of opinion on critical issues facing the city." That is a wonderful council goal, one on which all five council members sitting here, minus Mr. Gillette, is actually agreed upon. We reached those goals in a study session. It was unanimous, and I think it is wonderful to have that at the top of the list, because that is what government should be, and that is what the community expects from us. The community doesn't want a rift. The community wants everyone to get along and to do what is in the best interest of the residents of Thousand Oaks. Yes, we have had different opinions. We've gone about things differently. Nonetheless, the goal is, and always should be, help the residents and do what's in their best interest. I was surprised, to be honest, to have received that much feedback from the residents regarding Al Adams' removal from the Planning Commission. And it was because of your feedback, many of whom I didn't even know, that I decided that Al Adams should be reconsidered. His nomination should be reconsidered. It was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do. And I'm very grateful for the former Planning Commissioner, Mrs. Grumney, to be here and support you publicly. That means a lot, as well as an opinion written by CRPD Director Joe Gibson, which I thought was very powerful. I think tonight should be the time and the night for all of us to finally start getting along. And by doing that, you can support my upcoming motion to rescind the previous decision from January 25th and support me in renominating Al Adam. That will be my official motion.
All right. Ms. Bill Delapena moves to rescind the action of January 25th. Discussion on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't offer any comment when that accompanied the vote in January. It was out of an interest to be as unoffensive as possible to the person nominated. However, I will say that my opinion and my vote was not capricious, nor is it meant to be malice. It was based on my conviction. To respond to something that was said earlier, the definition of objectivity, it absolutely has nothing to do with whether someone agrees with me. I could care less if people agree with me, as long as they have their opinion and not someone else's opinion, and as long as that opinion is based on objectivity. Objectivity is weighing both sides of an argument, mixing it with what you know about the subject, and come up with an opinion that belongs to you. That's my definition. That was my conviction. So, I won't support the motion.
Any further discussion? Ms. Earle?
For consistency, I am going to support Councilmember Bill Delapena's request to rescind, but I do think it's very unfortunate that we've had to rehash this.
I have no interest in, as I mentioned on the 25th, saying anything negative about anybody. And I thought I was brief with respect to my concerns about objectivity, about fairness. We have a City Council that's elected by the voters. Sometimes there's close elections, sometimes they're not so close. The Planning Commission is not elected, and their decisions need to be apolitical. They need to be based on the city's general plan, and they need to be based on the policies that are set forth by the City Council. And the City Council has a responsibility to make sure all five members of the Planning Commission adhere to that city policy. Therefore, I'm not going to support the motion.
Thank you very much. Do we need to, we should vote on this, correct? I am very saddened that this is still the opinion, because as we have heard and as many people believe, Mr. Adam has been extremely objective and very professional about the decisions that he reached and has reached regarding planning projects coming before the commission. He's done superbly so. And to say that he was not objective, to me, is untrue, completely untrue. You've been extremely professional. Thank you very much for your service.
All right. There's no further discussion. Vote, please.
The motion is a 2-2 vote with Councilmembers Fox and Glancy dissenting, and a 2-2 vote does fail.
All right. So, that motion does fail. Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. The next move will be to then nominate an alternate. And the alternate is someone who has tremendous experience, who has been a previous Planning Commissioner, who has a PhD in geophysics, rocket science, who has served his community for a while, and extremely well. In fact, in one of the recommendation letters that I read by Sheriff Jeff Dean, he thought you were amazingly bright, and I completely agree with him. You have been living in Newbury Park with your family for quite some time. You have received many awards. You've sat on various committees, and most recently, you've been a member of the Citizens' Oral Board for Ventura County Sheriff's Commander Position, which is a citizen panel, which makes recommendations through the sheriff about which commanders to choose. That is a big deal. You've been on numerous committees, Blue Ribbon Campaign Finance Reform Committees. You, your list goes on and on and on. And so, you are Michael Ferris, Dr. Michael Ferris. I think that the only other alternative to Mr. Adam would be you, Mick, you go by Mick. And when you served on the Planning Commission, you did a tremendous job, absolutely tremendous. And I believe that your knowledge and experience will continue to serve our community very, very well, because you know how to analyze projects, you know exactly how to look at them, and you know the general plan inside out. You know everything already. And because Al is someone who was on the Planning Commission for four years, and I would like to nominate you simply because you know already what needs to be done, and there wouldn't be a steep learning curve for you. And with that, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Ferris is in the audience. I would like to nominate Mr. Dr. Ferris to the Planning Commission to be my nominee. It'll be an honor. Thank you.
That motion, I'm assuming?
That is a motion.
Ms. Bill Delapena moves to appoint, no, we have no comments. Point Mr. Ferris to the Planning Commissioner. Discussion on that? Vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0.
That is approved. All right. We're going to go back to the agenda. Congratulations, Mr. Ferris. I think you're here. There you are. All right. We're going to go to Item 9. That's the study session on user fees. All right. Let's, congratulations, Mr. Ferris. All right. Let's take a, let's make a brief recess. We're going to take a brief recess. We convene the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 8, 2011. And we're going to move to Item 9, which is the study session on proposed citywide user fees. With the council's permission, I'd like to move to 12B. That's the Traffic and Transportation Commission and that appointment, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure to nominate Susan Engler to the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Susan's been in our community for quite a while. She's been very, very active in contributing, giving back to the community, and she will be an excellent traffic and transportation commissioner. So, I recommend that you approve her appointment.
All right. Dr. Glancy moves for the appointment of Ms. Engler for the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
That is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Engler. We think. All right. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All right. Now, we're going to move to Item 9. Mr. Adams, can't wait.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'll make a brief presentation on user fees. This is a study session. It's not a public hearing, so this is our first intro to user fees for fiscal year 2011 through 2013. Tonight's presentation format, just to provide you a quick background, fees by department, new fees, development impact fees, staff recommendations, and questions and answers from City Council. Just a reminder, City Council's policy is full-cost recovery for those fees that have a direct, a direct party that benefits from the services. Other than that, we use general purpose revenues for community-wide services. And just to confirm that, Community Budget Task Force 99 confirmed this policy. Just a little history, since the '90s, we've had three full-cost studies on our user fees. The most recent for planning and public works was in 2007, and for building and safety just last year, 2010. Just a quick definition for a user fee, a fee or rate charged to an individual or group that receives the private benefit from services provided by the city. It's not a tax, and it's not impact fees. Just a graph to show you, on the left, 100% private benefit is supported by full-cost recovery of a user fee. And to the right, public safety, public benefit. History, the manual, which was included in the packet, does include just fees, includes more than just fees, fines, penalties, rates, charges, and assessments. This is the manual. It's in two sections. This is the draft manual for user fees. Just to give you sort of an idea of what we're talking about as far as user fees, approximately 4.1 million in user fees for the general fund were collected in 2009, 10. 71% or approximately two-thirds was generated from community development planning and building and safety. Our process, staff reviews fees, looks at the methodology, updates those, identifies new feeds. The proposed increases for the update, we are using, the Consumer Price Index over the last two years has been zero. We are increasing some fees based on the increases in salaries or labor rates, 1.21% over the last two years. Fees that are not full-cost recovery, recommended increases up to 20%. Scope of the fees, this just shows you all the departments and areas in which we charge fees. For city clerk, no changes to current fees. Citywide, there are 11 fees reviewed, no changes to non-rental rates. There was an increase in a rental rate for the library. Building and safety, as I mentioned earlier, we did do a study last year, 2010. There were 27 fees reviewed. There are two new fees, which are listed above and also outlined in the manual. Building and safety, the user fee, the cost study that we did in 2010 determined certain fees that are smaller projects were not at full-cost recovery, while other projects based on the new building standards- based on the new building standards were over cost. This is just a graph to show you where fees are and where the full cost is for these fees. As you can tell, the smaller projects are well under the full cost, while larger projects now based on new processes are above full cost. So staff's recommendation will be to increase the smaller projects and reduce the fees for larger projects. Other increases to building and safety, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical fees will also be increased 20% to move closer to full cost recovery. Planning and code compliance, 80 fees, no new fees. Deposit fees maintained at the current level. Fees that include labor were raised by 1.21%. One fee I do want to bring to your attention that staff is reviewing is the mobile home park rent adjustment request. Currently, the fee, which was set back in the '80s, was $20 for the application and then $5 for each additional unit. Staff is looking at those, at that fee, and will provide additional information potentially at the public hearing. We do have the list of full cost recovery exceptions. These are fees that are set under full cost. This just talks briefly about the mobile home park rent adjustment request fee. As I noted, the current fee is $20 plus $5 per unit, based on recent applications. Estimated costs for these rent applications, if it's the capital improvement methodology or the just-in-reasonable return, are identified there. This is based on staff time and the fully burned rates developed in the user fee manual. So just a few comments, possible change in ordinance based on the mediation may impact estimated costs. Staff to perform additional analysis. Community development will communicate any changes to stakeholders, both park owners and residents. Staff will return to City Council in the future, whether it's at the public hearing or a future date regarding this fee. Here's just a list of the full cost recovery exceptions, 13 in total. Cultural affairs, theaters, we do set theater fees. As noted, no changes in rental rates, parking rates, subscription fees, or facility charges. Labor rates will go up 1.2%. And there is one new fee. We are adding a monthly rental rate, which currently, we only have weekly rental rates for the theater. We've actually been approached by a, by a production company, which would like to rent the theater for one month, I believe in August of 2010, or 11, yeah, 10, 11. Theater, you can see the revenue created in the theater fund. 32% is based on labor charges, 24% based on the rental fees, and then box office charges at 24%. Finance, 14 total fees reviewed, small increase in parking citations to recover money that is now sent to the state to help support trial court operations. And as noted, Los Robles Greens golf course fees are part of the agreement and are set by the management company within the agreement. Library, seven fees. I will say, we did do some increases here. We did increase overdue materials from 20 cents to 25 cents a day, and the lost and damaged materials from $7 to $10. Police, seven fees, a reduction in our response recovery fee based on who's performing those tasks, it's actually gone down from $2.40 down to $2 even. Public Works, 65 fees, no new fees, just increases based on labor rates. Water, wastewater, those fees will return, I should say, those charges will return as part of the financial plans later in the month, or maybe in April. Development impact fees, there is a memo attached to the staff report, talks about the 10 fees. There will be no change in any of those fees. For the police facilities fee, which is based on the debt service for the facility, it's increasing 2%. And so here's staff's recommendation to review the information, conduct the public hearing, the study session, and then schedule the public hearing for April 26, 2011. And that concludes my presentation.
Nice job, John. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. We have one, okay, Ms. Bill de Pena.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I have a couple of questions regarding the user fee summary citywide, page five of 79, I guess it is. Some of the meeting rooms are not available. And why are they not available? For example, the, the Newberry Park Library, the meeting room was available, but at $120 an hour, and now it's not available anymore.
Give me, if you can give me a second.
Mm-hmm.
And, do you want to, to answer, in looking at it, I think you're specifically identifying the Newberry Park Branch Library meeting room.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, at least in the fee manual, it says holidays and other non-business hours, no charge, and then $120 an hour. And then the new is, this meeting room is not available during business hours.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
During non-business hours.
During non-business hours.
Yeah, no, the meeting room would still be available. It's just not available during hours when the library is not open.
Because currently, it says holidays and other non-business hours, and then it mentions a price, a rate on the left side, and then on the right side, it says it's not available.
Yeah. Well, if I understand it right, it's, the, the meeting room isn't available during, during non-business hours, but the rest of the time it is. There's no charge for nonprofit groups during times that we are open. And then when we're, and then when we're open, there is a charge for nonprofit groups as well.
But you see, you see the discrepancy.
Yeah. And I, and I'm going to estimate that our, our practice has been that it's not available on non-business or holidays when it's not open. It was probably an error in the past to be there. But what we'll do is we'll follow up with staff, the specific Newberry Branch staff, and clarify that. But if the, if it's not open, if the, if the library is not open, there's not staff to allow the usage of that facility. I think that the errors, I think the error from the prior fee was.
Is it a misprint, perhaps, or?
We're going to find out. We'll follow up.
Okay. I was wondering about that. Okay.
It's a great catch.
All right. And you will get back to us and at the next, at the, when we discuss this. All right. Then the other question I have is regarding the Community Development Department. I see that the rates across the board have increased about approximately 20%.
Only, not, for building and safety. Building and safety, mechanical, plumbing, electrical are increasing 20%. The, the plan check and the building inspections are, depending on the size of the project, is changing. Larger projects are having decreases up to 20%, and smaller projects are having increases up to 20% to move them to full cost. What has happened in 2009, 10, we actually hired a consultant to take a look at our costs, our costs, our full costs for providing those services. And over time, the city has been built out, the type of projects that are going through community development are changed. They're not large mass projects, they're smaller, they're infills. And so the costs on those smaller projects have increased, while the bigger projects' costs have decreased. And so we're adjusting fees to bring the smaller projects up, as far as raising their fees, and the larger projects we're bringing down to make them in line with full cost recovery.
Okay, yeah. I, in going through this whole of a book, I, of course, noticed that the highest increase suggested or proposed is for the mobile home rent.
And I should clarify, I think in the staff report, I made the error of saying that that was a proposed fee. I think what we want to clarify, and I tried to do in the presentation, was that this is right now the estimated cost, based on the most recent activity we had, taking a look at the staff time used. There's going to be some further analysis done by staff on what is a reasonable fee for the services that are being rendered. There's some other issues that we still need to work out, but showing you what the cost was to process those applications. And based on the ordinance, it's not been changed since the '80s, the fee is $20 for the application and $5 per unit.
Yeah. To see that it costs $15,000 to $25,000, depending on what it is you're doing, and we're only charging 20, that is quite the discrepancy. So any, I guess we never felt the need to change that sooner.
As I understand, and I'll let Mr. Prescott, I think these are really the new, I mean, since the ordinance was applied, I'm not sure we had many applications for these two methods.
Yes. The city had not received any applications for the just-in-reasonable return. And then this, this past year, we actually received two applications. So there hadn't been any in the previous 25 years since the ordinance was adopted and that fee was set. And then after going through both of those applications, one for Thunderbird Oaks, the other one for Ranch, we did realize that the, the fee that was actually written into the municipal code back in the '80s was woefully short. We did a, did a kind of a cost study and made that suggestion that this would be a cost or a fee, that if the city were to try to achieve full cost recovery, this would be what those full costs might be. There are some limitations in parameters, however, that we didn't really take into account in doing that cost study, and that's what Mr. Adams is referring to, that we'll be doing in the interim before bringing it back at the public hearing.
If you could do that, that would be great. And also, if you could bring back or bring to us, since it's not available tonight, the rate sheet for the Los Robles Golf Course Greens, because they set the rates, yet we don't know what they are. They're not, they're not in here. I couldn't find them anywhere.
They aren't, and that's, I apologize for that. Rates at the golf course actually recently went up March 1st, and they had been raised for close to 15 months prior to that. And again, they're sort of judged by the agreement on how much they can raise, and it's based on the market survey that they did in December. So I will provide that, probably just through council mail, what the newest updated rates are, and I'll even provide some history of those rates as well.
Yeah. We should definitely have that the night of the hearing as well, for the public.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
That will be included.
And let me see, if, I think that was it. I didn't use my post-it notes today, so, let me see. I think that was pretty much it. I just saw, as I mentioned, the biggest increase was the, the 20% in, in building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have one comment card. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Resident of Newberry Park Director, Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, if you will allow me to indulge, it's kind of a special night, so I will quote from my 10th grade poetry class, Sir Walter Scott. It's appropriate to say it, I know. I remember your mayor, Emeritus Fury, who really got upset when I used to say these kind of things, God bless him. "Breathe there a man with soul so dead, that hath never to himself said, that this is my own, my native land." It was about loving your country and your city. It's very sad that, I mean, that citizens are not allowed to participate, that their input is put in the recycle bin, and no one on the dais asks why. I am sorry that Dr. Gillette is not here. If he was here, he would, I just almost can verbatim say that, he would say, "What a wonderful report it is." I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not an actor, but he would praise the report, being, being so excellent. And the reason I feel so bad is, I mean, I mean, this is from the 1997 user fee manual. I mean, I didn't have it in a binder, so I've saved it. I have a bunch of them. As you know, my hobby is the city budgets. And we've gone, I mean, I should really be fired as Concerned Citizen Director, because I have failed. Failed, because our city, instead of going forward, we've gone backwards. I mean, this is page seven of your report, of the attachment number one, with the different fees, and current year, and proposed exception, current exception and, I mean, what is needed, what was done, and this report is full of it. You need to have graphs, I mean, to tell it pictorial. And the bigger thing is, why is there no comparison between previous years? And I will try to do it, and two minutes are gone. I mean, you have destroyed the, the councilmatic system by not allowing enough time to speak on important issues. Well, to start out, TOTV will show that in the 97 user fee manual, the staff went out to all the cities and did an analysis of all the funds, what the totals the cities got, what the Thousand Oaks ranking was, and what the per income, per capita was. Gone are those days. In fact, you know, I was chastised by somebody on the dais that, well, City Council purposely has high connection fees, so that our sewer rates are low. I mean, I had done this study, I have shown you this before. I mean, Camery, or just down the grade, 29 bucks a month, that's all they charge. I'll just take one thing, because there's no time. Disabled Access Appeal Board, it used to be, in 1997, 53 bucks. You know what it is now? You don't know. You don't care. It's $815 for these poor disabled people. At that time, it was proposed to be $130. God helps the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That concludes our speaker cards. Any further questions for staff? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Ms. Bill de Pena.
I move the staff recommendation, one, two, and three, with the public hearing scheduled for April 26th. And then that is when we will make final decisions regarding the user fees.
All right. Mr. Bill de Pena moves items one, two, and three for 9A. Discussion on the motion. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. That is approved. Thank you. Items 10 and 11, we have known, scheduled items. Item 12, we already handled, A, 12B, we handled. 12C is the final report for the draft cultural arts review report. Mr. Gillette is unable to be here tonight, so I'm going to handle the, kind of the introductory comments. You do have the report in your package, and then if there's some specific questions, I'll ask either Ms. Abano or Ms. Hong to provide some staff input. I direct staff, or the council, to page 26 of your report, and, excuse me, specifically to the executive summary, just to remind council and refresh your memory on where we were. Basically, as Mr. Gillette and staff and I looked at this issue, there was a number of premises and, and basically some understandings that we looked at. First and foremost was the realization that the Civic Arts Plaza, and in particular the two theaters, were a major city asset. They were city assets that we simply can't afford to let fail. Depending on what, whose numbers you're going to use, it's certainly in excess of today's dollars, certainly probably well above $100 million of city asset and investment. So recognizing that, the next piece that we looked at was the relationship and the importance, the relationship between the Alliance for the Arts and the City of Thousand Oaks. And as you go through the report, you're going to see there's a number of recommendations that addressed that relationship and roles and responsibilities as it relates to the Alliance for the Arts. We did a lot of work with the Alliance, and I'm happy to report that we've reached agreement on some, some difficult issues. Next, we looked at the city's response in 1994 to the residents that the theater in the Civic Arts Plaza would not be subsidized by general fund monies. And in fact, as the report outlines, we actually increased by $4, kind of a surcharge on the tickets, to ensure that the theaters were self-supporting. In doing so, that leads me to the next point of the report, where we heard from virtually all the users and the resident groups that the fees were too high, that we were driving away people that would ordinarily come to the theaters. So that was something that we looked at. And... And then that leads us to the, kind of the final piece, and that is the whole grant process and how the grants are administered. And we believe that the new cultural arts commission was actually better suited to provide recommendations to the city council for grants for the non-resident users. And then the Alliance can focus their efforts on fundraising and assisting with the resident groups. Finally, if you look at the report, you'll see that virtually all the recommendations that came out from the consultants, we did provide a committee response, you'll see that's in italics, and we did our best to address virtually everything that was in the report. That's, again, it's an overview. I'm just giving you the high points of what Mr. Gillette and I were looking at. If you have, well, let me just turn it over to Ms. Hong, and you can go through some of the recommendations and some of the details of the report.
So some of the recommendations for tonight is to give immediate relief to our local nonprofit community groups. We suggested that for this theater here that we're sitting in, when we have an event for a nonprofit group, that we not charge for the supervisor, employee supervisor that oversees that. That's going to be a, we're suggesting that be a one-time, one-year event. It's also, I think, in the user fee manual that you're looking at tonight, something that the council will be considering when we bring the budget forward. But actually, actually, the program would start now and then end at the end of March 31st, 2012, next year. That would save about 100,000 dollars annually for all the groups, that's about our cost. So, and also during the budget process, we would, we would like the council to consider giving theater credit grants to non-resident performing arts groups during the calendar year 2012, that's starting next year. And, and then again, to consider waiving the cost of the supervisor and the Cavali Theater. And that would be something that we bring to you during budget process. Again, we're trying to recognize we're balancing our general fund budget, our theaters budget, and that's all part of the process of coming back to recommendations with you about how this can be accomplished. Then in turn, we're looking to the Alliance to concentrate on funding the resident companies, that they will grant the two larger companies, which is Cabrillo and the New West Symphony, 100,000 each a year. This matter is still under discussion, but we've gotten to a general consensus on that. During the discussion with stakeholders became obvious to the committee that the council had never adopted a programming policy, and so this is a critical piece, it's missing, and we're recommending that the Culture Arts Commission work on that. And they've been, as you know, been meeting a couple times now and already in place. So we would recommend that the Culture Arts Commission develop guidelines and bring forward programming policy for city council consideration. And lastly, we would, we would like the council to direct staff to negotiate new agreements with the Alliance for the Arts and New West Symphony in terms of their agreements with us regarding not only their rent, but for the Alliance regarding their giving. And I think that's, that's about the majority of the recommendations.
I would just point out to the council, I know, as I read the report, it reminded me that I, along with staff and Mr. Gillette, we held our first community-wide meeting at the golf course on this issue on July 12th, 2008. So we have been at this for quite some time. I know council certainly were. Many complex issues, many competing issues, many meetings. I think Mr. Mitnick indicated that we had well over 40 meetings over the last couple of years, not counting the internal meetings that we had with city staff and the committee. But we wanted to come through, and we wanted to do a thorough job and, and come away with a document that actually would make our city operations as it relates to the arts, have it be coherent, have it make sense, consolidated in areas where it made sense. And, and again, we could go through each one of the recommendations, but I think in consideration of the time, if council has specific questions, that might be a better approach. Ms. Albano, did you have any other comments? Okay, Ms. Albano has none at this, at this time. Do we have specific questions? Mr. Irwin.
I have, I know it's time for questions, but a quick comment. I appreciate all the time that you and Mr. Gillette put into this. 40 meetings is incredible, and there was, it was difficult, but when we first got the, the consultant's report to figure out exactly how we were going to move forward and what we were going to do, and you guys really dealt with all the different stakeholders and tried to come to the best solution. So as a council, I think we owe you a big debt of gratitude for that. I just have kind of one, it's about something specific, but I guess kind of leads to a general question. On page 17, it was talking about the Alliance grants amounted to 200,000 in 2006 and '07, and, and it is proposed that the city provide a 50% match in 2009, '10, and 100% after. You know, all those things sound really great, but I was wondering with the, I mean, are we looking forward over the next, let's say, five years? How much now is, we've got, we've had a, basically a zero subsidy for the last few years, but how much are we looking at over the next five years subsidizing the theaters with all these different suggestions about, you know, matching grants and, and lowering fees and, and all that? What are we looking at?
That's, that's one of the biggest challenges, and I mean, you're hitting it, you're hitting it right head-on, is that we're looking at this fiscal year because of the economy, because of the, you know, the actual people coming to see shows, that we're probably expecting a 600,000 dollar loss in the theater fund this year. So trying to balance the, that's why the programming is so important, that's why we're trying to do, hoping, hopefully, that we'll be doing new things to bring people back to the theater. The economy's starting to prove. But we've got to balance that with how we're going to bring more groups in, and maybe there's some return on that investment when you start giving money to the groups and help them perform here. So there's, there's that fine balance that we're all trying to figure out where it's going to work, and it just could take a group of, of the Culture Arts Commission and the Alliance to do that. And I, Amy, did you want to add to that?
I also, I think it's important to say that those recommendations by the consultant were done at a time and place that are so different from where we sit now.
Right.
So that we all realized, and that we couldn't possibly do that. And one of the things that staff continues to meet with Alliance, their key board members, treasurer, president, and we've been discussing, because there's certain things that we're trying to do, I'm going to use the word stopgap measures, which is why we're talking about the Alliance giving, you know, grants in the tune of 100,000 dollars, which they've never done before, to, because we think it's really a critical path right now, and the council, we're recommending that you consider using 90,000. But we're also trying to look out long-term, and that's something that we're, staff is having ongoing discussions with the Alliance about, because we realize none of us can sustain maybe that level of giving for the next five years. We're really trying, this is almost like a critical years for us to get through, and hoping that the, the economy starts on the upswing and we start seeing people coming back. So that's why we're not ignoring out, but we are trying to deal with a stopgap measure as we look into what we think the future. That's really important to the Alliance as they see what they're committing to, because they are concerned we're committing to, you know, in a five-year period, that would be a million dollars to two groups, and that, we don't know if that's really sustainable. So that's why we're sort of doing a two-step process at this point.
Thank you for that. So then, just two more kind of specific questions. I, I was reading that there had been a $4 surcharge to make sure there was no general fund subsidy. Is that being taken off the tickets then, or is that, that staying on?
$4 surcharge remains.
Okay. And then I, what I couldn't read going through this, is there some suggestion to go into the endowment, or just basically we're going to continue to just use the interest on the endowment? Endowments.
Yeah, well, inter county, county community foundation endowment, which started with 3 million dollars, it was given by the Alliance and others, that, we always take out the amount, the 5% of a rolling average, and that's what, we're told how much we can take out every year, it's around 200,000. The Alliance has been making up the difference. And the Alliance had taken last year out of their endowment, had actually, to be able to make their operations. So that's something that they have to be aware of, too, and they haven't made a decision on what they're going to do this year yet.
But the Alliance is seriously considering, again, making a withdrawal from their endowment, which they hadn't done. They haven't been using any of the interest payments. And again, it's like ours, it's on this five-year, you know, this rolling basis, the interest amounts, and they did use it last year to, to make the payment to the city, as well as some of the other obligations. And they are looking at, again, this year, and that's why I'm saying there's certain measures that are short-term that we don't see happening over the long-term because of wanting to continue to build the endowments at the same time. But I believe, I don't believe either is going into quote-unquote "principle," but really taking out interest that has been earned.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have no speaker cards on this issue. Seems almost anticlimactic here with all the work we've put into this, but we have No, I'm not going to make it. But thank you.
Would you like me to make it?
Yeah, sure. Anybody.
Again, a huge thanks to the mayor and Councilmember Gillette for all the effort, and, and for staff. I know that there was an incredible amount of effort and hours put into this by our staff members also. So I will move the recommendation to adopt the ad hoc committee's recommendations to the draft cultural arts review, pages five through 18, and then also recommendations two through four.
All right, Mr. Irwin moves recommendations one through four. Discussion. All right, here, and then let me just comment, oh, Ms. Bill D'Elipena, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, we've come full circle after three years or so, and to be quite frank, this was inevitable. I think back then, in 2008, when we discussed this issue, we realized that we might not be able to completely have the arts, arts and culture groups rely on themselves for, for, to, to, of course, continue to flourish. And when we made the decision not to subsidize the arts anymore, that was just a major, major blow to the local arts community. To think that in Washington, there is discussion now to take away the funding for national public radio, and here we are in Thousand Oaks, doing the exact opposite, trying to restore whatever arts and culture we have, and we have a lot of it. We are very rich in, in arts and culture, and the local artists that are offering their, their works and crafts to us and the rest of the community. It is a, a portion of this, of course, is a pilot project for one year, I believe, but the arts nowadays cannot survive without any government subsidy. It's sad. You look at other, at all other developed nations in this world, and they all receive funding. The governments give funding, provide funding for arts and cultural programs. It is the fabric of our society and needs everybody's help. So of course, I will support this motion, and I know that we will have to look at cutting other programs in order to do this, but without the arts, what are we? We are nothing. We have lost our identity. So I will gladly support this motion. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with what Councilwoman Bill D'Elipena just said about the value of the arts and how, how excellent it is that we do support them the way we should. But I primarily want to thank both you, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Gillette, for the tireless effort in, in doing this. I think it's an excellent opportunity and example to see how well you can use the senior members in a negotiation like this. And I'm seeing it as a negotiation, because you had a lot of different people, a lot of different ideas, and dealing with different people. I think you did a great job. I really appreciate your effort, and thank you very much. Certainly will support the motion.
All right. Thanks to the council for your kind words. Mr. Gillette, if you're watching out there, just very much appreciate the partnership and the great work that you did on the, on this committee, your sense of history, once again, has played dividends for our community, and your insight, and it was a pleasure working with you on this. And I know I speak for both, Mr. Gillette, and I am glad that we're able to file this one away and move, move forward. All right, if there's no further discussion, vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
That is approved. Thanks to staff also, Ms. Hong, Ms. Albano, Mr. Mitzi, really everybody that was involved in this process, great work. Ms. Bill D'Elipena.
I didn't mention that. I do want to thank staff and my colleagues as well. I, I missed that, so I want to make sure that that goes on the record, because that was quite an undertaking. Thank you.
All right, very nice. Thank you. Item 13 is council issues and follow-ups. We have none. Item 14 is the city manager's report. Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, three things. I'll do some follow-up from the public, upcoming items, and a comment on the state budget. We had a speaker toward the end making comment about comparative data, and he made reference to a variety of different fees and charges, including wastewater rates. I'd like to remind the council that our wastewater rates are locked at $25.45 a month. That's 20% lower than, I think, the city of Camrio that was referenced, and Candy Hong will make sure that we follow up with that individual to provide him comparative data. We'd be happy to walk him through some of that. By way of items coming up here, we, a lot of talk about the arts here, and while we have the New West Symphony folks here, I can't help but plug this weekend Chopin 200 anniversary masterpiece series, a very exciting young pianist will be there. There'll be pieces by Beethoven, Mozart, and Chopin. So those who like piano with orchestra, this is your opportunity to show support for your local symphony. How about that for support? The next council meeting, it will be on March 22nd. At this point in time, we have two hearings, I think, one dealing with the definition of hardware stores and home improvement centers. This is a follow-up from the Home Depot project from a year or so ago. And then municipal code amendment dealing with some technical cleanup work on the planning side in terms of time, time extensions, inactive applications, and so on. There'll be, we heard reference earlier in the evening to council member retiree medical benefits. That issue from the council's finance committee is scheduled to come back to council on March 22nd. We heard some comments and questions about the auto mall, the sign issue. It's not clear when that's coming back. We are waiting for the auto mall group to come back with a revised design. Once we get that, we'll, we'll schedule that accordingly. It may have to go to the planning commission and then to the city council. Wanted to remind everybody about the extensive rehab work taking place on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The work started this week. That'll go through May 3rd, basically from Erbs Road all the way down to Westlake Boulevard. It's a complete rehabilitation project. All the details are on the city's website, and that, and the redevelopment agency's putting in, I think it's two or 2.4 million. There was an item on the agenda dealing with that. And that's a good example of how we use redevelopment money in this city, and that's a good segue to talk a little bit about the state budget and the proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies throughout California, including our own, and to do the realignment of local government, primarily county services. The way both of these are, are proposed would have a devastating impact on our community. We would not be able to do things like the rehab project for the Boulevard. A lot of talk about the arts in this community and how important it is to invest in the arts. Well, the rumor in today, the big theater next door, the Cavali Theater at the Symphony plays, and wouldn't be here if it were not for redevelopment. So that's why we're fighting so hard to protect the local property taxes. We've been We've been in constant communication with our state senator and our state assembly member. They both are adamantly opposed to the theft of local property tax revenues, and they're fighting hard for us. We appreciate that. And the vote on this issue may take place later this week or next week. So we continue to monitor that. And the council's provided updates daily. So we'll continue to do that. I think I covered everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. We'll move to our last item, which is adjournment. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of three individuals. Lee Laxall, former mayor and council member, Claire Mintz-Lickerman, who's the mother of city employee Gary Mintz, and John Mattson, who's the brother of police chief Jeff Mattson. Tonight's adjournment in honor of Lee Laxall, former Thousand Oaks mayor and council member, who served from 1980 to 1989. Lee served two terms as mayor in 1984, and then again between 1987 and 1988. Lee was born in Portland, Oregon, and he participated in many plays and productions. During this time, he met and married his wife of 54 years, Lila, known by her nickname, Kitch. While in school, he found he had a strong aptitude for math. He graduated from Lewis and Clark College, then Oregon State College, with a master of science in mathematics. He was hired by the Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena, where he eventually worked on upper-stage rockets that carried Department of Defense and NASA payloads into space. During his tenure on the council, Lee was known for his commitment to open space. He advocated slow growth in Thousand Oaks, as well as protection of our beautiful ridge lines. Lee co-authored Measure A, a ballot that was overwhelmingly passed in the polls in 1980. This ballot limited the amount of new residential housing developments that could be approved for construction each year. Lee was well-known for his participation in community service, his intellectual talents, his deep spirituality, and love of family and friends. Lee behinds his wife, leaves, leaves behind his wife, Kitch, three children, eight grandchildren, and 11, eight grandchildren and 11 great-grandchildren. On behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, we send our sincere condolences to the Laxall family. Lee was a true gentleman, and he will be deeply missed by his family and many friends throughout the community. Our second adjournment this evening is memory of Claire Mintz-Lickerman. Claire was born on February 6, 1930. She's the mother of Gary Mintz, who's the employee of the city's cultural affairs department. Claire was born and raised in San Diego, California. She was married to Martin Mintz for 42 years, and together they raised three children. Subsequently, Claire married Mort Lickerman, to whom she was married for 13 years until his death in 2007. Claire managed to have several careers after her children left home. She was a licensed yacht broker, a longtime career counselor, and until the week of her death, a volunteer teacher of English as a second language for the Culver City School District. Her interests included world travel, cooking, live theater, movies, and anything associated with water and the ocean. On behalf of the city council, we send our deepest sympathies to the entire Mintz family. Our final adjournment tonight is in memory of John Earl Mattson, who's the younger brother of our Thousand Oaks police chief, Jeff Mattson. John was born in 1950. He received his associate's degree from Pierce College and his bachelor's degree from California State University, Northridge. John served 25 years as a senior investigator for the Los Angeles County probationary department, working both investigations and field work. John was well thought of by his peers in the probation department and the Los Angeles County Superior Court judges, who trusted his recommendations on numerous criminal cases. John was a gifted artist, oil painter, and commercial graphic artist, often designing graphic art for rock band drummer, drum covers in the late 1960s and early 70s. John is survived by his wife, Lillian, sons Jeffrey and Lance, and his daughter, Taylor. We'd like to send our deepest sympathies and condolences to the Mattson family for the loss. And with that, we will be adjourned to our regular meeting of March 22, 2011. Have a great week.